Any questions on the motion? All those in favor?
Jim, I just got one.
Okay, before we do that, yes, Counselor Gates? Just on the back page, Jim, there's... Sorry, Mayor Giadad. We had a motion at the last meeting with the NHS. And I'd just like to know, has the motion been sent? With the relationship to the NHS and Dr. Kevin Smith? Yes, the Clerk, do you address that?
Yes, it has, although they probably have not received it yet. I sent it off late last week.
Okay, thanks very much. Thank you. Any other comments to the motion, receive the minutes? Okay, if not, then we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. First up here, we've got deputations and present...
What did we have there?
Oh, I'm sorry, disclosures of particular interest. Do we have any disclosures from anyone on council? Okay, I guess not, then we'll move on. Deputations and presentations. First up, we've got the SciTech Candy Cane Lane 5K Race and Fun Run. And I understand there's been a change in the presentation schedule, is that right?
There's a bit of a change.
All right.
I have a special guest who will be presenting as well. Mayor, members of council, ladies and gentlemen.
Heidi.
The 29th Annual CA Winter Festival Lights is underway. And as such, we are presenting the 7th Annual SciTech Candy Cane Lane 5K Run, presented by RBC Royal Bank. This Sunday, November 20th, is in support of Project Share. Over $10,000 has been raised over the past six years, which supports the Holiday Basket Program. Various businesses and groups from Niagara Falls will be participating in the Corporate Challenge aspect of the Fun Run, which is only 2.5 kilometers wrong. Prizes awarded are most funds and food raised for Project Share, most participants, as well as best team spirit. Businesses include SciTech Canada, RBC Royal Bank, Ed FM, and The Review. We would like members of council to enter our Corporate Challenge team and participate in supporting Project Share during this campaign. And now, if I may, I would like to introduce you to a five-time winner of the Italian Marathon, Mr. Giuseppe Scarpi.
Mr. Thompson, thank you very much. My name is Giuseppe Scarpi, that's me. And I thank you very much. Dino apologized he could not be here today. So he called me Giuseppe Scarpi. And he said, "Giuseppe, I needed your help." I said, "Well, I stopped my train, and I come around." So I here now, I talked to Dino. He said, "Giuseppe, we needed your help. We got this bigger race someday. And we gotta get all of Niagara Falls, City Council, Mr. Mayor. We gotta get them put on." So I say, "Mr. Mayor, City Council, Niagara Falls, join Giuseppe Scarpi, we want to run something, huh?" You ready? Just a minute. You tell him, you know, he's a nice guy. Did you tell me this morning, too? You're in Canada, you have this Movember. So I start, "This morning."
Wow. Can we ask questions of you, Giuseppe?
Sure, sure.
Heidi, your English is pretty good.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, you don't look like a long-distance runner, but it's only 5K, so. Counselor Peter Angelo, I understand you're gonna be participating. Did you wanna address Giuseppe here on our involvement?
Well, Your Worship, I know that there's some corporations that are involved in the run. And I was approached by Mr. Fazio and asked if I would be the lead for City Hall. And I'd be more than happy to, Your Worship. And hopefully, any member of council will join me. It's only 2.5K, actually, for the Corporate Challenge, or any staff member, for that matter, Your Worship.
So Counselor Peter Angelo will be representing us and putting a team together. And we look forward to taking on... Hopefully, you can beat Giuseppe in the contest. He looks like he's... He does, he looks pretty fast, yeah.
Well, thank you. And don't forget, you bring a boss to Project Share, no?
All right, thank you, Giuseppe. See, ladies and gentlemen, everybody comes here to council because you just never know what to expect. Counselor Thompson?
Well, I've been around here a long time. And I've seen Mr. Fazio in front of this group on numerous occasions. And I don't know, he deserves an Academy Award. If you had have asked me, could he ever do that? I would have said, absolutely not. But it was humorous, he got the point across, and I think you did a good job.
Yeah, and all the name of the Winter Festival of Lights, CA Winter Festival of Lights.
That's presentation time.
Yeah.
Next time I believe him.
Fantastic, and well done. And ironically, he did start off by talking about the mustache that he started growing this morning. And it leads me right into my next topic here. Now, there was going to be a presentation tonight for Movember. But the group decided not to do the presentation, just asked me instead, just to remind everybody that the month of November is known by many as Movember, where a lot of men are asked to grow mustaches to support the cause of healthy prostates and in the battle against prostate cancer. So I know a lot of people have done it, and they're doing it to raise money. This year, I couldn't do it, I had to skip here. I was in my... My sister had a christening for her daughter, and I was a godfather. And so anyway, I'll still donate to the cause, but this year, no Movember. But for those firefighters, I know the firefighters have put out a challenge. They'll take on anyone that wants to outraise money for prostate cancer. And if you're into the challenge, or you're up to the challenge, by all means, step up and make sure you register your team on the Movember website.
Thank God for Gates and myself.
I saw mine this morning, too.
They're still jet black, I don't know how you guys do that. Next up, Honeymoon Suite. And we've got a special presentation here. I'm gonna come down, Johnny D. Where's Johnny D? Johnny D, come on up here, Johnny D. Next up, I wanna honor one of our own. And come on up. And this is guy... Oh, come on up here, we wanna get you on the cam. How are you? Could you see him?
Cheers.
I wanna tell a little bit of a funny story here. Johnny D, I'm sure everybody in the room knows, lead singer and creator of Honeymoon Suite, band known around the world. And the part that we're so thrilled is that he's from Niagara Falls. And just a quick little story here, if I could just tell you a little story. All right, to tell you a quick little story?
Right.
Yeah, you have no choice, I'm telling it anyway, right?
He's the mayor.
Yeah, I got the mic. But when I went to university, a long time ago, I remember a lot of the guys I went to school with that were from Toronto and all of their areas. And I remember my one buddy in particular from Scarborough, he had the cassette, Honeymoon Suite cassette, playing in his car. Remember cassettes, when we used to play cassette still? And he goes, "Niagara Falls, you must know Honeymoon Suite."
I still sign cassettes.
I do, he still signs them?
Yeah, they bring them back.
Well, he says, "You must know him." And I said, "Well, yeah." But I didn't really, because, you know, he's a little bit older. And I said, "But." Just a little bit. But I said, "We both went to the same high school."
Right, Ann Meyer?
That's right. Yeah, keep the purple proud in the White Pure?
There you go.
Yeah, okay.
Look at what he's done.
What's that? Well, at least he kept the purple proud.
Yeah. It's like getting a record.
But anyway, and you wanna give a little bit of history? Your last keys, you had some issues with some keys in the past.
Well, no, the first one broke, the second one was okay. But like, I'm getting to meet you, and I wanted a third. You're giving this to me, and I appreciate it greatly. It's an honor.
Well, you know, on the radio station, I had an interview this morning, and they asked, they said, "Now, why?" And we said, "You know what, Niagara Falls, Honeymoon Suite, what's more synonymous than honeymoons in Niagara Falls? Niagara Falls is honeymoon capital of the world. And Honeymoon Suite, and to go around the world and to spread the good word of Niagara Falls and honeymoons, like a lot of people say, if you haven't been here for your honeymoon, you're not married yet, officially." So on behalf, Johnny, of all city council...
To go.
All the members of our council, all the residents of the city, to the millions of tourists that come here every year, and all your huge fans, if you've got some huge, huge fans.
Thank you so much.
If Chrissy Rotundo is out there listening to this, she's a huge, huge fan, Chrissy. I don't know where she is, she's one of those groupies that just hides in the shadows. On behalf of all of us, Johnny, we would now like to officially...
There you go.
Officially. Give you the key for the third time. All right? And don't lose this one. Big hand for you. Thank you. Your parents here?
Well, they're not here, but they're gonna be... I'm gonna see them in an hour.
Anything you wanna say?
No, I just wanna say, it's a great town. I love where it started and where it's come to. I've been here for a long time. And just keep it up, you guys, it's just like totally cool. Keep it going. Thank you very much. Thanks for having me. Thanks so much. Thank you.
Oh, and also, Johnny, before you run away, we do wanna acknowledge, we do have the Chair here of the Arts and Culture Commission.
Yes, we're...
And he was just inducted recently into the Arts Wall of Fame.
That is too cool, and I wasn't here for that. I was in St. John's Island, and I just wanted to, you know, thank her so much. I wanted to come here, yeah, to say thank you. Keep it up, guys.
Thank you. Okay, next order of business, we've got the 25-year Business Anniversary List. And what I'm gonna do, we've got a number of businesses that are here in the audience. And you see the list up on the screen behind, or to my right. We're gonna call each... We've got about a dozen we're gonna call up. We're gonna say a couple of nice things. And then, and then I've got a certificate that we're going to present. Is that okay? What's so funny about that? Say some nice things. No, no. Okay, first up, I'd like to first call up ACA Engineering. Al Antonio, come on up here, Al.
I'm gonna say some... I'd like to present this certificate to you, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
25 years is a big milestone, quarter century in the city. 25 years of professional engineering business here in Niagara Falls. Established in 1986, but in 2001, Al decided to team up with Van Boxmier and Stranges Limited, a London, Ontario company, to create a joint venture operation. Thus, a new company was formed, Van Boxmier Stranges Antonio Structural Engineers. That's a multiple, right?
Yes.
Al Antonio is the VP of Van Boxmier Stranges Antonio Structural Engineers. Congratulations, 25 years.
I can't really believe that it's been 25 years. I was shocked when I was given this recognition. But I do appreciate that the city does welcome the participants. And it's always an honor to continue working in this great city of Niagara Falls. So again, thank you.
Thanks, Mom.
Next up, AC Vinyl Windows. Francesco Cabral, owner, is represented by his daughter, Nancy. Nancy Cabral. Congratulations.
Thank you.
These people, they manufacture and sell custom-built windows with lead-free extrusions and dual-seal insulating glass and hardware. They started out with four employees and 2,500 square-foot facility. They now have 14 employees, 22,000 square-foot employee... Or facility, rather. They're proud of the fact that they've helped many employees over the last 15 years, or I'm sorry, this is... That have been with you for 15 years. But you've been here for 25 years. AC Vinyl Windows is family-owned and operated, incorporating two generations. Congratulations.
Thank you very much for the recognition. And I'm sure you guys are like... I'm not the one that runs the business. My dad is unfortunately gonna be here. But thank you very much. And as you know, I'm probably the next generation coming up through the business. So it is in good hands, and thank you guys for the recognition.
Thank you, it's fun.
Okay, next up, we've got Anastasio's Appliance Repair. Joe Anastasio. Joe, welcome, congratulations. At Anastasio's, they provide in-home service to major appliances, washers, dryers, air conditioners, refrigerators, and dishwashers. They were established in November 1986. They built their business by purchasing, rebuilding, reselling used appliances. 25 years, congratulations.
It's an honor and a pleasure to serve the people of Niagara Falls. I thank them, I thank God for helping me out all these years. And we look forward to hopefully 25 more, maybe.
Good, that's what we want. Congratulations. Okay, next, we've got Barbizon Research and Development Corporation. Louis Barbizon? Barbizon is leading the way as they research, develop, design, and fabricate machinery structures for the steel and automotive industry. Their projects include machines for steel melting furnaces and automotive testing equipment of ball joints and seals. They designed and built an all-steel bolted gazebo for Crystal Beach's Queen Circle Park. And have designed and created the City of Niagara Falls Trillion Award Flowers, which we presented recently, which are beautiful, just to name a few of their unique accomplishments. Congratulations, Louis.
Thank you, I'm happy to be a Canadian.
Next up, we have Expressions Flowers and Gifts. We've got Frances Berry and her husband Jerry. Jerry Berry.
Jerry from the agency's managing sellers.
Couple of years.
Yeah. Expressions is a full-service flower shop which offers a diverse selection of locally grown and imported fresh flowers and plants specializing in weddings, events, and always with artistic and creative floral designs. They also carry a line of affordable gifts including spa and bath products, quality plush, balloons, and greeting cards. Currently located in an 80-year-old home on Lundys Lane near Dorchester Road, they provided flowers for many local events, including Millennium Wedding Celebration, Niagara's Running of the Brides, and their avid volunteers in communities in Bloom. Congratulations, 25 years.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the honor. It's been a pleasure doing business in Niagara Falls and serving the community, and I really appreciate you and all.
Thank you, congratulations.
Next up is IFR Monitoring Canada. IFR Monitoring Canada here today? Ormidrod Solutions? Did I get that right? No? Not quite. You're Peter?
Yes.
Okay. Peter...
Ormidrod.
Okay. I think we spelled it wrong in my notes.
Good day.
The word is Peter. Welcome. Ormidrod provides full electrical and contracting services throughout southern Ontario. They do commercial, residential, industrial installation, maintenance, troubleshooting, and repair, as well as data networking, cabling for computer and communication machines, along with equipment rewiring and retrofitting. And to commemorate 25 years in business, which is a great milestone, even if I can't say the name right.
It's all right, that's why we changed it to Voice Electric.
Okay.
Is that what it is now? Yeah. We shortened the name because that just chooses everybody.
Oh, great, we'll get a new certificate made up. Okay, so you wanna say a few words here? Other than the name change?
Thank you for the honor.
Yeah, very good. That's good, congratulations. Rolfe Financial, Niagara Peninsula Benefit Brokers. Rent Rolfe? I will Brock Ford. This is the 30-year list now?
No, I think we have one more.
Okay. Hodgson? T. Hodgson and Company Limited? Okay. How are you? Welcome. Tell you what, for this one, we're gonna do things a little bit different. I'm gonna ask you to tell us about your company. First, it's time for the picture. Oh, 25 years?
25 years. 25 years ago, we started out as a small miscellaneous fabricator doing railings and stairs and small jobs and renovations. Gradually worked our way into industrial maintenance, where we worked on the abrasive industry, which we had a lot of the time. And moved into a building in '97 on Kister Road. Since then, we've built overhead cranes and runways and worked in the annealing furnace industry, helping other companies in the city here and facilitating them. And we're now into subarc welding processes for welding heavy plates and heavy qualifications.
Wow, all right, big hand for that.
Thank you very much for the honor. Appreciate it.
And thank you.
Is this the list of the other 25-year runners that are here?
And if you'll notice on the screen, there's the rest of the list. 25 years of service, I couldn't be here tonight. We've got BMW Services, Elite Travel Agency, Holiday Inn by the Falls, Italian Bakery, Pure Cake Design, Kenneth V. Harris Bearster and Solicitor, Merone Construction Limited, Niagara Falls IMAX Theater, Provincial Maintenance, Queen Street Pharmacy, Rainax Niagara Realty, State Farm Insurance Company, and T. Hodgson and Company, Inc., which we already did. So how about a big hand for all the 25 years? You know, and it's important that we acknowledge these companies because small and medium business is the backbone of our country, never mind our city. Matter of fact, 75% of all employees work for companies with 10 or less employees. So it's important that these companies are successful, that they thrive. And we don't want them just to survive, we want them to thrive. So 25 is quite a milestone, being a quarter-century in business. My neighbor says it's unbelievable how quickly it creeps up. Well, we've got some here that have been 30 years in business as well. And we'll get you guys back for that one. But first up, we've got Brock Ford. Brock Ford, Keith Dill and his son, John.
John F. McInnes, Mike Van Matisse, David.
Okay, that's good. How are you?
Wonderful, nice to see you.
Very good, good to see you, too. Got a card on that right now?
Is this what I wrote?
What's that? I'll let you know in a second. Actually, I've got a Ford Flex in there right now. I'm getting service. Congratulations. Thank you, yeah. It's a great car, by the way, commercial, right?
Thank you, thank you.
Ford Franchise Automotive Dealership was purchased by Keith in 1981. Family-owned and operated with Keith's son, John, as a general manager, with a startup staff of less than 20 employees. Brock currently employs 70 full-time staff. And I can tell you firsthand, they're very friendly, they're very knowledgeable, and they do great work.
With benefits.
With benefits, that's right. Notably, Brock Ford is among the top dozen Ford dealerships in eastern Canada. And in 2000, a major facility renovation was completed. And in 2012, another major facility renovation will be started, and we look forward to it. What a big hand for Brock Ford.
Well, thank you, Mayor DiDanni and city council members. Like most of the previous recipients, it's been a great privilege to serve the wonderful community of Niagara Falls. I'm an optimist, I believe that the last 30 years have been great, but the next 30 will be even better. The only caveat, Jim, is that I won't be here for the full next 30, okay?
Well, you never know.
But my son, John, who unfortunately couldn't be here tonight, is my Ford approved, and does need his successor. And he'll do a great job carrying on the Brock tradition, so thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next up is CIS Income Tax Service, Carmen Armenti. Congratulations. Located in our historic Drummondville CIP district on Main Street, CIS specializes in Canadian and US income tax returns. They provide year-round service and also offer assistance with US gambling winnings recovery. Congratulations, we're very happy for you, Carmen.
It's a pleasure receiving the recognition. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, we've got two more. Kara Fashions. Is Kara Fashions here? Yeah, come on up, ladies. We've got Violet Philip and Cheryl Vendramen. Is that right? Benjamin. Like Benjamin, like Benjamin, right? Is this Cheryl?
No, I'm Violet.
You're Violet?
I'm Violet.
Very good, nice to meet you, ladies. Nice to meet you. Hey, yes, oh, yeah. Who's your sister? That's for you, I'll read a little bit. The place to go for ladies' brand-name clothing at discount prices, established in 1981 by sisters Violet and Helen Domjam.
Yes.
Okay. Operated for 24 years on Queen Street until their move to the Talleyton Country Plaza. Violet and her daughter Cheryl Vendramen... No, Vendramen, like Benjamin, that's right.
Vendramen?
Benjamin. Take pride in selling quality, brand-name ladies' clothing at excellent prices and continue to bring in new products weekly to keep your shopping experience interesting. And with Christmas right in front of us, now is a great time, is that right, ladies?
It is.
Would you like to say a few words?
Oh, well, thank you for the honor, and I hope we're here another 30 years.
Well, are they...
I won't be here, but she will. Well, she might.
And do you have, I'm assuming there's gonna be some good, great Christmas specials coming up here?
Yes, absolutely.
I just wanna pass along to our CAO because he likes to wear women's clothing. No, really, you think you wanna tell... For Halloween, what were you, Mr. CAO? What were you for Halloween? He was Murphy from The Wizard of Oz. If you've never seen size 14 ruby slippers, you missed the sight. They were nice, very cute. Congratulations to Kara Fashions. And the last two that couldn't be here tonight, Clancy's Restaurant and Bar and Royal Lennon Service, the King Family. How about a big hand for all of our 30-year... And last up tonight, 35 years of business. Tonight is Pedler Bicycle Shop. And we've got Mayor and Sam Drew. Congratulations. Want to read a little bit here? Proudly located on Queen Street Downtown Niagara Falls, boasts more than 41 years international experience in the bicycle industry, and have been awarded the Niagara Falls Review People's Choice Award 16 times years in a row. With more than 1,000 bicycles in stock and a huge selection of bicycle parts, accessories, and clothing for all of your cycling needs. And I can tell you, I've been going to this place since I was a little kid, I remember going with my dad when we would buy our bicycles. And now I'm there with my kids, buying our bicycles and our trail bikes. And we've got traditionals, on the weekends, we take a ride to Niagara Lake and back with our trail bikes. And I can tell you, nothing has changed on there. These guys haven't aged, they look exactly the same. It's unbelievable, I don't know what it is, but congratulations. Anything you wanted to say to... We're very excited about what's happening in downtown Queen Street. We're all very excited about what's happening there. We've got a lot of neat things and a lot of neater things to come. Pedler, 35 years in Niagara Falls. Thank you to all the businesses that were here today. And we'd like to also mention that the 40-year-plus businesses will be recognized in December. So thank you very much, congratulations. Okay, first up on the agenda under planning matters, I would ask our city clerk if he could address the change in the agenda.
Yes, Your Worship, in your handouts this evening is a revised order of business. There's a parking and traffic matter related to Bridge Street two-hour parking time limit. We're treating this as a public meeting in the sense that anybody who wish... We're treating this as a public meeting in the sense that anybody who wishes to speak to the matter didn't need to pre-register to speak tonight. Some notices were given to the nearby businesses and people that work in the area, and I believe Mr. Dren will speak to the matter.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Dren?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to start off by just orienting everyone with the area to illustrate what we're trying to show here tonight. On the screen, the area in red is the area that we're talking about, and it's currently it's a two-hour free parking zone. It's part of an area that's similar to the rest of the part of the downtown where there's some pay parking with meters along various areas. There's free parking in the red zone, there's free parking in front of Simon's Restaurant along Cataract. And what we're looking at here is a situation where parking has been allowed in that red zone. It's a two-hour red zone, but we permitted all-day parking for several years now. And for the most part, that parking worked fine. Until recently, we've had requests from the businesses in the area who are looking to have more turnover parking. And therefore, what we're here to, tonight, to recommend is that we go back to the original intent of that zone, that it be two-hour parking, and that we provide enforcement on that basis. But to recognize that people have been parking in there all day, and we're suggesting a phase-in of the, of a monthly parking fee in one of the two parking lots, Municipal Parking Lot Number One and Number Two, a phase-in over six months to allow those people to move from a free parking situation to a pay parking. So we're suggesting that it started as a phase-in at fifteen dollars a month and then proceed to the amount in the, that's normally charged in that lot after six months. And just to add, we have invited all the people along the street there to, if they wanted to participate in this. As well, with Canada Border Services, it's sometimes difficult to provide information to them, and we've actually went out to the vehicles on the street and posted a notice for this meeting tonight. As well, in addition to that, we received a couple responses from Canada Border Services' staff, and merely two of them were asking when it's starting and if they can buy their permits now.
Okay, that's, that's great. Thank you, Mr. Dren. Are there any comments yet, Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, so they were invited to the meeting tonight.
Yes.
And you didn't get any response?
Just two that, I'm not sure if there's any here from Canada Border Services. I know there's, I know there's other people here, other businesses that may wanna speak in that area.
What about the article that was in the paper with some of the dissatisfaction with respect to cars being ticketed, other cars not? I'm sure Mr. Simon is here tonight to express his opinion with respect to that. And I recall going through this many years ago with the Border Services, and we flipped back and forth a couple of times because these people were extremely upset about the fact that, and as you can see on the diagram there, there is no parking with the Border Services' property, so the only place they have to park is on the roadway in that particular area, which most of them park there. That is gonna be a two-hour parking zone?
That's correct.
Free parking?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Well, I'd like to hear what Mr. Simon has to say, and do you have any comment on this article that was, didn't make us look like we were, knew what we're doing here very much with respect to concerns expressed by many of the businesses in the area?
In response to that, Mr. Brown, our parking operations manager, worked very closely with Mr. Simon and the owner of, and the operator of Dad's Restaurant to try and alleviate the issues that are, that, and the concerns that they had. And I believe it's worked out very well in the last several months that they, he's addressed all their issues and concerns. And this is sort of a culmination of getting in front of council and now saying, let's go back to the way it should be on Bridge Street with the two-hour free parking.
Okay, I'd like to hear Mr. Simon speak.
Is there any other counselors, any other counselor to bring up, or bring up? Pat, Simon, you wanna come up to the mic, Pat? Share your comments.
Good morning.
Afternoon.
Afternoons. My name is Patrick Simon. I own Simon's Restaurant at four-one-one Sixth Bridge Street, Niagara Falls, Ontario. We've been in business since eighteen eighty-four. This is our hundred-and-twenty-seventh year. Now, we've had a parking problem around our shop here for the last three years. Been unprecedented, really. Every half hour, every fifteen minutes, there's a commissioner coming around looking at wanting to tag cars. People have been scared to come down to our shop and around our area. And across the street, the parking, which we don't object to that, the parking, the customs parking there, we don't object to that, 'cause it hasn't bothered us. But we don't want them to bother our customers and our own property, or our own street, in front of Bridge Street and on Cataract Avenue. And they've been coming around all hours of the day. He takes a measure to tape out and measures the car, the wheels from the curb to the car and go, how many people do that all over the city here? How many places have that precedent happened to them? Well, I'd like to know. And another thing is that they take pictures of cars and they come around and they keep on harassing people when they come in there, and it sort of scares people. Why are they doing that? We're the only place in Niagara Falls that has that kind of operation around here, that they're looking every fifteen, twenty minutes, half hour, they're coming around there looking to put a ticket on a car. Now, I wanna know, I wanna know why they're doing that, and I wanna know if they're doing anything else to the city, and I want it stopped. That's what I wanna do.
Okay, thank you, Pat. We're gonna get some answers. Is that gonna be you, Carl, or Paul to address that?
I can respond to that. We, you know, just to respond to the frequency of what he's speaking of, we don't do that. It's a two-hour zone, and we don't come every fifteen minutes.
Oh, they do.
There would be no reason for us to do that. You know, we enforce based on a two-hour rule. They don't come out every fifteen minutes. And part of their job is, in some cases, measuring and taking photographs. It's done throughout the city. It's our validation when we have to go to court and defend a ticket. It's evidence for us. So we're not doing anything different than we would do in other places. The aggressive nature is not, we're not as aggressive as what you're saying.
Certainly are.
We come around every two hours, and in fact, Mr. Brown has worked very closely with you, and the enforcement level to date, since he's worked with you, has been nonexistent. And that was agreed by all the businesses on the street that until this issue was resolved, we would not enforce.
That's true. I agree with that.
And, you know, the owners in that area agreed to it, along with Mr. Brown. And so, you know, every fifteen minutes and, or every ten minutes, we're not doing that.
Well, they certainly are, and I can tell you, they're doing it every fifteen minutes, half hour, all day long, they're doing it. And at nighttime, they come by at nighttime looking for cars parking on the street. We don't have anybody parking on the street at night, and we wanna, we wanna just be as it is right now. We don't complain about the customs whatsoever parking on the street. If they wanna park there, they've been parking there for the last ten years, they give us tickets, but they go across the street, the sign is posted every two hours, and they do not put one ticket on those cars. Why is that? Who's supposed to be doing their duty? But for us to do the duty, but for anybody else to not? That's what I wanna know.
Okay, we've got Counselor Thompson and Counselor Morocco, Pat, that wanna speak to this issue as well.
Well, it doesn't make me very happy when I see Mr. Simon, who is, without exception, one of the truly great volunteer community people upset with what's going on. And this is, without exception, since the bridge closed there and became a nexus bridge, the traffic has been cut substantially, and very difficult for these businesses to survive. And I think it's incumbent upon us to do what we can to make sure that these places survive, the employment, jobs are retained, and I think this can be done with a little bit of feelings for what is happening down there. I don't wanna make a decision on this tonight because I'm still concerned that the Border Services are going to all of a sudden come back after this is passed and find that this is a great disaster. I, rather than putting little notices on their car, I'd like somebody to notify them, have a meeting at City Hall, explain it to them, or go down there and make sure they're aware, and there is some acceptance of this. Because I went through this two or three times before where it was an extremely hot issue, and these people were extremely upset about the situation. In fact, that's why it exists today, I think, because there's no, there's no ticketing with the cars that are parked there for the entire day. So anyway, I would like to continue on with the moratorium and work with certainly Mr. Simon and the owner of Dad's Restaurant, is it? You're gonna blame Dad for all of this?
It's only two, no, I blame anybody, really.
That was supposed to be some hearing, though.
It just didn't work out that way.
Yeah. Anyway, I would, I would move that we defer this to the next meeting so that everything, everybody is informed, and if they have a deputation or they want to come here and tell us about their concerns, they have the opportunity to do so. So I would so move we defer it until then.
Okay, maybe just before we do that, I know Counselor Morocco, if that's okay with you, Counselor.
No problem.
And if there's any members, anyone else, members of the public, maybe from CBSA or otherwise, is there anybody here from Canada Border Services? Anybody here tonight from CBSA? No? Is anyone else here on this issue?
Yeah, their concerns.
Okay. Counselor Morocco?
Thank you, Mayor Daddany. I also support Counselor Thompson's motion, just that I'm sure that we can actually, in our record of tickets that are issued throughout the city and in certain areas, and how many are issued, is that something that we can actually get a report back, just so that we can see how many tickets really are being issued there, if there's an overabundance in that area as opposed to other areas? I think that would show us the proof right for that.
Okay, yeah, well, we can get either Mr. Brown or Mr. Dren to address that. Yep?
Just on that, for the past, past four months, there have been no tickets issued there with respect to this.
I think with all fairness, it would just, you know, show us and show stuff that we have some proof of how the ticketing process is working in that area. So I just appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Well, do you want direction or motion, whatever your, what the preference?
I prefer to come back with the report.
Okay, so we'll come back for, they can, we can ask for that, full report.
So I'll send that.
Okay. Next, we've got Counselor Maves and then Counselor Gates.
Yeah, your worship, I'm not sure whether this is for Mr. Dren or not, but there was a three-year moratorium on the parking for the CBSA. Is that correct? Was it three years or longer?
No, the moratorium itself was supposed to be a six-month moratorium.
No, but I mean, for the years that they've had the free parking along there?
It's been about ten years.
It's about ten years?
Yes.
Did we ever get any revenue from that for providing?
Well, it was free parking. No, we didn't, we didn't, yeah, we didn't get any revenue from it.
So we're basically giving the government employees a freebie for Bridge Street, and everybody else pays, and I don't think that's fair, so I think we definitely do have to look into this, and I'll certainly support the motion. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Gates?
Yeah, just real quick, I'd like to agree with Counselor Thompson. Mr. Simon, I'm sure, as you know, I enjoy going to your restaurant and spending some time and talking to you. Obviously, to come in front of this council with the passion that you're showing today, I don't think anybody around this table is ever questioning your credibility for being here, for sure. You're obviously losing some business because of this.
Definitely.
And I'm sure the other businesses in the area are as well. So I think it's certainly important for us to find a resolve to this. The fact that we haven't ticketed anybody in four months is a good thing. I don't know anybody who wants to go to breakfast at your establishment and then come out and get a ticket. It's an awful way to start your morning off, quite frankly. So I think we have to do whatever we can to support a local business like yourself and one that has, I don't think has credibility could ever be questioned. And to come here in front of council tonight with the passion that you're showing on this, I think we've got a job to do on behalf and under yourself with the business down in that area.
Thank you.
Mr. Dren?
Just a point of clarifications on no tickets issued. There were no tickets issued related to a two-hour zone. However, if someone was in a no-stopping zone or a restrictive type of infraction, there were tickets issued on that basis, but nothing for two hours.
Well, that's one of the things that, there are people with wheelchairs that can't get over the curb, they have to park on the corner to let them out so they can roll up on the sidewalk. There's a, they can't lift their foot six inches to get onto the curb, and it takes a few minutes for them to get out of the car, and you have to escort your wife or whoever you're with there into the store and make sure they get in safely, and then get in your car. By the time you get to your car, they have a ticket, a fifty-dollar ticket on your car. No, that's, you have, I know you have to do your job, but you have to use your head too when you see that kind of a situation.
Yeah, absolutely, common sense, and maybe sometimes we've had an overzealous commissioner, you know, occasionally, but absolutely, we're gonna make sure that we address this. We appreciate you coming here, 'cause we know it takes a lot for you to get worked up, and I know that our parking traffic are trying to come with some resolutions here. So what we're gonna do, we've got a motion for Counselor Thompson to defer, and we're gonna have staff come back with a full report, including the ticket history in that area. We wanna make sure that we do this right. I mean, it's been ten years, so it's a couple more months, you know, we'll do it right this time. So we have a motion by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Gates. Is there any other discussion on the, or Counselor Morocco, I'm sorry, yeah, we did have, that's right, I'm sorry. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Okay, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous, and we'll bring it back, and we'll invite you and this Canada Border as well, Pat, once we have that information.
I'd like to make just a couple of comments while I'm here.
Yeah.
I've never been before to the city council before in all the years that I've lived here, but I wanna make a few comments where the city is going, you know? We got the War of Eighteen Twelve coming up here very shortly, and if you went downtown and asked anybody about it, ninety-five percent of the people would know what you're talking about. And that's what's gotta change, eh? Niagara Falls has one of the finest histories in North America, and we're not capitalizing that one bit, and that's one of the things we gotta bring up. Like, we used to have the Valentine's Day celebrations here. We had the Blossom Parade, we had the Apple Blossom Festival, we had the Peach Festival here, we had the Miss Niagara and Miss Teen Niagara Contest, which we don't have anymore. We've had Halloween where the City Hall was open, and the kids used to come down and get candies and everything else. We don't have that anymore. In the Christmas time, they did the same thing. These are observations that we, and another thing is Niagara Falls has been knocked out of the finest wonders of the world, and that's almost impossible from what they claimed, what they've chosen for that, and I like to bring that up. What we should do is return to our roots and get a old home week going here and have a program for downtown Queen Street. Every week, have some group do something downtown, regardless of what it is, and lay out a plan for the whole year if you want Niagara Falls to succeed, the whole city. That's one of my things there, I like to bring it up while I'm here, and we need a publicist to help get Niagara Falls back on the map where it counts, and bring people here. Thank you very much for your time and, uh...
Thank you, Pat. Pat, before you go, Counselor Carrillo wants to comment.
I'm just gonna suggest, Pat, that next year for Halloween, our CEO could put his Dorothy costume on and handle candidate City Hall, and Dean could be Toto.
Thank you very much, Pat.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, next item, Planning Subject P.D. twenty-eleven dash eighty, Marinelli Estates Draft Plan of Subdivision. I would now ask our city clerk to help introduce the next item.
Your worship, a public meeting is now being considered to, is being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city zoning bylaw to, for the development of Marinelli Estates' draft plan of subdivision located south of Mountain Road west of St. Paul Avenue. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, October fourteenth, two thousand and one, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you, Toto. Mr. Hilevich?
Thank you, your worship. Yes, this property is on the south side of Mountain Road. The slide shows the... The slide shows the Fucow property on the left side and the Leacy property on the front. There's 66-foot wide road allowance that leads into this subdivision. The, there's outlined in blue, lands equating to 3.2, 3 acres, three and a quarter acres of land. You can see, basically, it's an area surrounded by single-family houses, backs up onto the Hollage Road on the south and Dell Park subdivision beyond the Hollage Road. The, while we're on this slide, I'll just point out as well, the lands to the east of this have been developed as Corangelo Estates. You can see to Corangelo Drive, and there is a temporary street right now that runs from the top dogleg on Corangelo Drive, from there to Mountain Road. I bring that up because that will be part of one of the comments that you'll be hearing from one of the people representing Corangelo Estates. The, there's an air photo of the area, so largely it's an area undeveloped on the south side of McLeod, or Mountain Road, rather. It's an area that's been long identified for urban development. North of Mountain Road is Callagera Estates. I mentioned to the south of Hollage Road is Dell Park, and immediately to the east is the Corangelo Estates. I remember kind of gray, black-looking squares, those are the roofs of the houses that have been constructed. Again, this neighborhood concept plan was presented to city council in 2000, so the lands that we're talking about are outlined in red. They, basically, it's a new road, Marinelli Drive, which will extend south from Mountain Road to Lucia Drive, which is running east-west, more or less on the south end. Lucia then leads into Corangelo Estates, and Corangelo Drive then extends north, and ultimately, its plan is that would weave its way through the lands to the east, extending out to Mountain Road. One thing this plan shows is that the original concept was for Corangelo Drive to extend across the Hollage Road Trail and connect with Dell Park. This council determined that that extension wouldn't occur. There was a Ontario Municipal Board hearing that was part of the Corangelo Estates subdivision presentation, determined at that time that the street would not extend across Corangelo Drive. The, and the Hollage Road Trail would remain intact. The other thing that has been brought up is the concept, I might show that here on the next slide, is a concept, there's Block 12, which is identified as a part of a walkway, which would extend from Lucia Drive to the Hollage Road Trail. That would immediately about Block 19 in the Corangelo Estates, which is also reserved for part of the walkway. So there are two 3-meter-wide blocks, that would be 6-meter-wide strip of land, approximately 18 feet wide, that would provide for a walkway between Lucia and the Hollage Road Trail. The proposed development is actually 11 lots for single detached dwellings, and basically it's a single-sided road, so there's just enough room for Marinelli Drive to come in from Mountain Road, and have lots fronting on to the east side of Marinelli Drive and onto the south side of Lucia. There's potential for future development to the west, and in fact, Lucia Drive could then extend further west. If you go back to this slide, you can see where the Lucia would eventually terminate as a cul-de-sac to the west of the current property. The application that's before councils tonight is actually to amend the zoning bylaw from a development holding zone to an R1C zone, and then to process the subdivision application, which is for the 11 building lots for detached dwellings. I mentioned already as well the walkway for this particular property. We had an open house in October, excuse me, with the adjacent property owners. The current property owner came out as well as the applicant. The, we did receive letters, though, from the abutting property owner, so the abutting owner at 6630 Mountain Road asked that additional trees be planted along the road allowance. It's now going to flank their lot. The city's standard practice is to provide two trees along the exterior lot line. We are recommending that the city's practice be followed. They have asked for a curb cut onto Marinelli Drive. That can be accommodated at 6666 Mountain Road. The, this is property of the weather also, let's back up for a minute. That's the property immediately to the west of the box outlined in red, so there are a number of lots that could potentially front on to the west side of Marinelli Drive and the, oops, going the wrong way. The owners of that land to the west have asked that they, that when the sewers are put in, there'd be laterals into that property. Unfortunately, that request is a little premature because we don't know the size, location of those lots. The concept that I just showed you is one that could possibly be developed, but it also depends on who actually ends up building that. So rather than putting in laterals at this point for lots that don't actually exist, it's not recommended. The weather also asked that a fence be constructed all along that side of the lot. However, it's really not, doesn't make much sense since the land is to be developed in the future, and in fact, the applicant has indicated that they would be interested in, as I said, having services extended in that property. And then the property that's at the other corner where the entrance will be onto Mountain Road have requested additional trees as well be maintained or be planted along their side. We are recommending the city standard of two trees for that exterior lot line, and several people have, or two of the people that are in this area have also asked that the temporary road entrance that I mentioned to Corangelo Estates be left open. We do have a letter from Danny Corangelo, he was the developer of Corangelo Estates, to the east. He's asking that the temporary road be closed and that the lots over which that temporary road passes be returned to him once Marinelli Drive is constructed. In reviewing the application, planning found that the proposal is consistent with the provincial policy statement and growth plan. It's consistent with the official plan. It has a density of about nine units per hectare, whereas the official plan would allow as much as 25 units per hectare, so it's well under what the official plan would allow on that site. The proposed subdivision design is fairly straightforward, is to connect Marinelli Drive south from Mountain Road to Lucia. There's future potential for development to the west, as I outlined. We're recommending a one-foot reserve along that entire west side of Marinelli Drive in order to ensure that those lands develop in a comprehensive manner through a plan of subdivision. There's no parkland development required, no parkland dedication required through this development. The Block 12, which is the trail, or the pedestrian walkway, would be counted as part of their parkland dedication, they'll be paying cash and lube for the balance of the land. The, as I said, Mr. Corangelo has asked that the temporary road be closed once Marinelli Drive is constructed. We're not recommending that. It would create a very long dead-end street into that area, and our official plan has a maximum length for dead-end streets of 150 meters, 500 feet. So once the lands to the east of Corangelo Estates are developed, there will be a second permanent access provided out to Mountain Road, and at that time is the time that we're recommending that temporary road be closed. The fire department identified an opportunity to create a possible link, I'm just gonna back up on the slides here, between Dell Park, so where the red line extends south from Lucia, well, I realize there's a red line all over around, but from Lucia extending to the Hollage Road Trail, or else laser pointed here. So in this location, the fire department did identify the potential of perhaps extending or allowing for emergency access across here, across the Hollage Road Trail and connecting with Dell Park. Dell Park does not have a second means of entrance or egress for emergency situations. However, this matter was previously considered, as I said, at the Ontario Municipal Board, and so despite the fact that it would be advantageous to hold up for safety considerations, the idea of crossing the Hollage Road Trail is one that's not being advanced at this point. The, we had recommended a one-foot reserve along portions of Marinelli Drive that would have prevented the Fucow family from connecting and the Leacy family from connecting with driveways. Really, there isn't any importance to that if they would like to have a driveway, so therefore, we're recommending that we don't go after the one-foot reserve. They could then apply for their driveway cut, which would be a standard municipal procedure. There are a number of conditions that are attached to this draft plan of subdivision which we're recommending. The applicant has requested, as I said, an R1C zone for the property, which would implement the subdivision design. All of the lots exceed the frontage and lot area that the R1C zone provides. The R1C is the exact same zone as Corangelo Estates to the east and Dell Park to the south. So it's a compatible zoning, therefore, we're supporting that. Therefore, planning is recommending the proposal that is within the urban boundary, it meets the provincial policy statement and growth plan. The lots are in size that are in keeping with the character of the area. The subdivision complies with the official plan, it's compatible with the maximum density, and the R1C zone is consistent with the zoning of the area. Therefore, we're recommending the draft plan of subdivision be approved, that the mayor be authorized to sign within 20 days, provide there are no appeals to council's decision. Draft approval would lapse after three years, that's a standard condition. The zoning amendment would be approved, as we've outlined in our report, and the mayor and clerk would be authorized to enter into the subdivision agreement in the future. So those are the highlights of the application.
Thank you, Mr. Hrlavich. Any comments from city council? Okay, seeing none? Seeing none? Members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting will result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referrals that it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheet will result in the staff rejecting an appeal as per Section 3419 of the Planning Act. Council will now hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Is anyone here other than the applicant that would like to speak to this? Yes? Oh, Mr. Brady?
Richardson? Richardson, yes.
I knew that. Tom, welcome?
Thank you, your worship.
Yeah.
I'd ask Mr. Hrlavich to call up the neighborhood plan, please.
Good evening.
Hold on a minute.
Which one? Sorry. The neighborhood plan. I'm gonna have 2000 questions.
Thank you. Good evening, your worship, members of council. My name is Tom Richardson. I'm a partner in the law firm of Sullivan Manning with offices both here in Niagara Falls and in St. Catherine's. I appear this evening on behalf of a numbered company, the principal of which is Mr. Donato Colangelo, the developer of Colangelo Estates' plan of subdivision, which, as Mr. Hrlavich has indicated to you, lies immediately to the east of the proposed Marinelli Plan of Subdivision as shown on the concept plan. Mr. Colangelo was present with me this evening and can answer any questions that I'm unable to answer. We are here in support of the Marinelli Estates' draft plan of subdivision. Indeed, we are asking that you approve it because we believe that will allow you to honor a commitment which we believe was made by the city to Mr. Colangelo 10 years ago. We are asking you, as Mr. Hrlavich indicated, to direct the return to Mr. Colangelo of lots 14 and 16, which currently provide the only access to the Colangelo Estates' plan of subdivision, and there the two, thank you, are shown at the top of the plan, 14 and 16, leading into the Colangelo Estates' plan of subdivision. I've provided to you a small exhibit book this evening because I'm not very good with the PowerPoints or with the laser pointers, and so I have some hard copy to provide to you. The Colangelo Estates' plan of subdivision was the subject of several reports to this council in 2001, and I'd like to take you through some documentary material to indicate why I'm making the request to you this evening. Tab one of the report, or of my exhibit book, is the recommendation report dated February the 12th, 2001, just over 10 years ago. This is the report that recommended the approval of the Colangelo Estates' plan of subdivision. In each of these reports, I've highlighted the portions that I wish to take you to, but you'll see on the first page that the report recommended the draft plan of subdivision. It did so with a temporary road, that is the one over lots 14 and 16, and if I take you to the third page of the report, you will see under the heading servicing and temporary roadway that I've highlighted the following statement. "The temporary road access proposed over lots 14 and 16 to Mountain Road is acceptable to the city and region, subject to design and construction requirements. The roadway will serve only the 16 buildable lots within this plan and must be removed when an approved alternate access to Mountain Road is available." I highlight, Mr. Mayor, members of council, it was to serve only the 16 buildable lots in the Colangelo Plan of Subdivision and was to be removed when an approved alternate access to Mountain Road is available. There was a second report because the council reconsidered whether it should be a permanent or a temporary access, and the second report is found in tab two of our report. It was found, or dated April the 9th, 2001. On the second page of that report, I've highlighted two paragraphs. The second paragraph that I've highlighted says this, "The temporary road location does not meet technical criteria for a permanent road. The dimensions are inadequate to provide the right-of-way width of 66 feet, daylighting triangles and turning radius needed for a collector road that would serve the entire future development in the area. Furthermore, if this location were to become the permanent roadway, it would necessitate changes to the internal roads and lotting design of Colangelo Estates, as well as connecting street locations and potential lot arrangements for the abutting land." At the very bottom of the page, you'll see I've highlighted the last two words, and they carry on onto the top of the next. "The planned permanent road connection shown in the gold neighborhood plan to the west of this subdivision is supported by city and regional staff. The temporary roadway location has inadequate dimensions to function as a permanent road." The roadway to the west, of course, is the roadway now proposed on the Marinelli Plan of Subdivision. That roadway was shown on the neighborhood concept plan, which was available for the Ontario Municipal Board in 2001. So again, the report contemplates that we will be dealing with the access road to the west, that is the one that's before you tonight. In the same report, if you were to turn over to page six, you will find a series of conditions of draft plan approval. Item number 18, that is, condition number 18 reads as follows, "The subdivision agreement include provision whereby the developer agrees to remove at their sole expense the temporary access from Colangelo Drive to Mountain Road over lots 14 and 16 immediately upon any alternate approved street access becoming available." Now, on the neighborhood plan, there are only proposed to be two accesses. The one is through the Marinelli Plan, and the other one is off to the east or to the right, so you have a choice. It was as soon as any road access was provided, either on the Marinelli lands or on the lands to the east. It had to be one or the other. And so this condition, which was approved by council, said immediately upon any, any alternate approved street access, and there can only be two, according to this plan. So, and I might point out, if the lands to the east were developed first, the entrance way would be a good deal further away from the Colangelo lands than the Marinelli entrances. So those were the conditions that this council approved. At tab three of my document is that Dell Park be extended through to Colangelo Estates' property, which would have obviated the access off of Mountain Road. This council denied that because of the objections of the residents in Dell Park, who did not want a through street through their neighborhood. Council denied it, and then council approved the subdivision with the temporary road. And so that's not been approved. The point I wanted to make with respect to the OMB decision is found on page two. You'll see the portion that I've highlighted. This is a comment by the board summarizing the evidence that the board heard. "The long-term permanent access was to be located further to the west through the Marinelli's property, in anticipation that it will eventually develop with a second access further east through the Sekowski's property when it eventually develops." The concept which we proceeded with was we understood when the Marinelli lands developed, then that street would provide the access and the temporary access would disappear. At tab four, I provided portions of the subdivider's agreement, which regulate the Marri-- sorry, the Colangelo Estates' property. If you can turn over to, at the top right-hand corner, it says Schedule Page 26. It's the fifth page in. It's paragraph 40 of the subdivider's agreement entitled "Lots and Blocks Unsuitable for Building Purposes." "The subdivider agrees, A, that the lots and blocks described on Schedule J, attached here too, are unsuitable for building purposes, and B, that no application will be made for a building permit for the erection of any building or structure on any of the said lots or blocks until such time that an alternate approved access to Mountain Road becomes available and the temporary access is removed." The next page is Schedule J, and it's locked 14 and 16, along with the two blocks, which provide for sewer easement through the same two lots. And again, I wish to emphasize, when you're looking at that subdivision agreement, there was an alternative of only two entrance ways, one to the west of our property and one to the east. And this paragraph says, "Until such time that an alternate approved access to Mountain Road becomes available and the temporary access is removed." The next page is Schedule J, and it's locked 14 and 16, along with the two blocks, which provide for sewer easement through the same two lots. And again, I wish to emphasize, when you're looking at that subdivision agreement, there was an alternative of only two entrance ways, one to the west of our property and one to the east. And this paragraph says, "Until such time that an alternate approved access to Mountain Road becomes available." I've not had the graphics, which is why I've asked Mr. Hurlovich to put up the concept plan, but I've included in tab five the property identification map that we use for title-searching purposes. I've highlighted the pathway or walkway on the Colangelo lands that Mr. Hurlovich has identified in the material he provided to you this evening. And it also shows perhaps more clearly the location of Dell Park Drive and the slash across, which is the Hollage Road Trail, immediately below both the Marinelli subdivision and the Colangelo Estates' plan of subdivision. At tab six, I provided the detail from the registered Colangelo Estates' plan of subdivision, and I've highlighted the walkway there. And as Mr. Hurlovich indicated to you, it's three meters wide. I understand the one in the Marinelli Estates' plan, which is in tab seven of my booklet, is also proposed to be three meters, which gives you a total of six meters or 20 feet, which I believe is the minimum requirement for fire access under the building code. Now, we are cognizant of the wishes of the fire department, and so I've been in communication with your staff over the last several weeks, looking for some solution. To go back to this plan, or to the one in my booklet at tab number five, you can see that the Dell Park Drive, plan of, or Dell Park Drive itself and that subdivision, is far deeper than 150 meters. It was approved in 1971, before any provision in the official plan, or I suspect before any standard of the 150 meters was devised. But nonetheless, it still represents an issue for firefighting, whether it's a standard or whether it isn't. We have proposed that use be made of the Hollage Road, which would provide access to the back of Dell Park Drive, and also through the two walkways proposed on Marinelli Estates to Lucia Drive for both Marinelli Estates and Colangelo Estates. We're happy to continue to work with your staff to find a solution there. But I say to you in closing, Mr. Mayor, as follows. We respectfully request that the council honor what we believe was the commitment made in the written documents 10 years ago, and upon the development of Marinelli Estates and Marinelli Drive, that the city release lots 14 and 16 on the Colangelo Estates' plan of subdivision. And we're happy to continue to work with your staff to find an alternative solution to satisfy fire department needs in that area. This is the last solution, which I proposed in a letter which I believe has been circulated to you this evening, was provided to your staff on Friday, and it suggests that Mr. Colangelo would see to the snow plowing of the trail as far as the walkway entrance to Marinelli and Colangelo Estates until the lands to the east develop. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Richardson. Are there, Mr., first of all, Mr. Hurlovich, is there anything you wanted to comment on with Mr. Richardson's presentation?
You know, I accept Mr. Richardson's premise. You know, I don't have the exhibit book in front of me, so I can't quote the exact words. But basically, the words are that once there's an approved alternate route, then the temporary road could be released. And our position as staff is that we don't have an approved alternate route, since we need both accesses for emergency services. I'm not exactly sure what approved means, whether it means at the point of draft approval, or when the plan is registered, or perhaps even when the road is assumed. Mr. Richardson refers to the subdivision agreement from 2001. There's a report later in your council package where we're just assuming the subdivision of Colangelo Estates tonight, if that report goes through. So in fact, 10 years after the fact. So in fact, that road that's in there is not yet an assumed road, and it won't be until we deal with that report. So is it, once it becomes an assumed road, a road on a registered plan of subdivision, or a draft-approved road? So that word "approved," from a staff perspective, is one that, is one that actually serves the area in terms of emergency servicing. So our position is different than the one that Mr. Richardson's put forward.
And unfortunately, our solicitor is not here tonight as well to give our legal perspective. Maybe, was there anybody from council, first of all, that wanted to ask Mr. Richardson any questions specific to those two lots, or anything else? Yeah, Counselor Thompson?
Yeah. You're not talking anything about the access to Dell Park at this point?
No, I'm not. I'm simply saying that I think there is a solution that would provide fire access to Dell Park, not permanent access, fire access. But what I'm talking about is the same access from the trail into Marinelli and Colangelo.
I'm happy we're not talking about the access to Dell Park. We, we had a long-time battle with the residents of Dell Park, and if we were talking about that, they should have been notified and invited here tonight to have their input because they were adamant, they did not want access. And then, of course, it was physically impossible with the Hollage Road there to have access in any meaningful way without interfering with the Hollage Road. So I hope we're not talking about that. We're just talking about the access off of Mountain Road.
The, the fire access, that's, that's correct, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Mr. Richardson, any other comment to our, comments from our planner? I mean, he's, there's an interpretation of the word, I guess, what was the word, Mr. Hurlovich?
Approved.
Approved. So you gave three options of what it could mean, and I'm not really sure, without our solicitor being here, what word we're going with.
Well, I think if I could ask you to turn back to the OMB decision again in tab number three, you will find what everyone, I believe, understood at the time, the practical result, and that was the long-term permanent access was to be located further to the west through the Marinelli property. That is, when the roadway is built, you're being asked tonight to approve a plan of subdivision. There's the word "approved." What I'm saying to you is for practical purposes, that doesn't help the fire chief if you approve it tonight, and I say, fine, give us back our lots. There's no roadway there. But if you approve the plan of subdivision, and as I said in my submissions, you will grant us those two lots. Once the street is built and the fire department has its practical access, you've got an approved, what you've approved tonight, access which is physically constructed. And candidly, I think otherwise we're simply playing with words. The practical intent was, when there was a means to get in there, then the temporary roadway was to come up.
Seems clear. We're gonna, I'm gonna get the fire chief just to comment on this as well. Lee, if you could comment.
Thank you, Your Worship. When this subdivision was, was approved in principle, and we did a review on it, what we looked at was the subdivision in total. There were three access points. One of them went across the Hollage Road, came from Dell Park, and that really solved two problems for us. One was the longstanding issue with Dell Park, and the other one was a third means of access to this subdivision. So we had two off of Mountain Road and then one from Dell Park that gave us many sources of, of access for emergency purposes. We're always looking at two means of access to get to any of the residences within the municipality. If one becomes blocked, then we have a secondary route to get into. There are some situations in the city that do not provide that access for us. It's not by, by our design to today's standards because we're, we're still searching for those two. And there are mistakes that are made in some cases. The problem with a subdivision like this, in totality, it looks great. And then we have the Hollage Road that was not able to be passed through to create the third access, and then we get pieces and phases of subdivision that go in that present problems because you don't have both of the access points from Mountain Road all at once. It's not all, all developed at the same time. So we end up with, with temporary access points. And in this particular case, even the access point that's designed with those two lots in question exceeds what we would normally permit. When you end up putting the Marinelli Drive in, you have to go down Marinelli Drive all the way down to Lucia, and then back up Colangelo right up to the top. It's an extremely long run. So again, it doesn't provide for two means of access, which we would prefer to have in subdivision like this, or a partial phase of the subdivision, until you get that land to the east developed, where you'll have another access point from Mountain Road. Whether that happens in one year, or 15 years, or never, you know, I don't know when that's going to take place. In the meantime, we're left with trying to deal with a partial development of a subdivision. And that's where we run into these problems, where we have a temporary access today. The Marinelli Drive will provide us with additional access, but I, in all good conscience, conscience can't recommend that we reduce those two lots, providing the additional access, until we get the third, the second permanent access from Mountain Road.
I've got a question regarding the Hollage Road, I don't know through the chief or to the chief or to our planner. I know that, I don't think there's a lot of appetite to have it accessed directly through Dell Park, but could it not be accessed right off of Mountain Road, where the gate is? If they needed to drive down the Hollage Trail and, and turn east into the development, could that work? In an emergency situation?
I can interject. That was what we intended when we said we were prepared to snowplow. It was from Dorchester to the combined walkway in, not from Dell Park. I'm sorry, if I misunderstand Counselor Thompson's earlier comment. We're not proposing, for our purposes, that you extend Dell Park at all. We're saying, in the letter, which I hope is in front of you, was sent on Friday, was that we would commit to snowplowing the, the trail as far as the combined two walkways that are on the Colangelo Estates and on, proposed on the Marinelli subdivision. Now, if I could just add one comment to that while you were speaking to the fire chief. If you look to the development to the, to the west of, of Marinelli, you may wish to calculate the distance from Mountain Street down Marinelli Drive and then turning west to go into the lands to the west. That would be more than 150 meters long, too. You're still going to need, if you follow these rules in your official plan, you're going to need a second means of access in and out to serve that end. You don't have it. But there is an ability, and that's why I offer to continue to work with your staff, there is an ability, it seems to us, to provide some means of providing to the fire department a second way in off the trail system. We've not had any, any communication directly with your fire chief. As I said, we acknowledge the fire chief's concerns. We think there's an answer, and it's one your area is going to need in any of it.
Chief, did you want to comment on that?
Thank you, Your Worship. There's two issues here. One is the bulb to the west. You don't measure that from Mountain Road because there's two means of access as you come down at the corner of Lucia. You can go either way with the development of that subdivision to date. Marinelli comes in from, from Mountain Road, you also have access right now through the temporary access up of, up Colangelo Drive. So that point that you would measure that dead-end corridor would be from the red line west to that bulb.
So I won't argue with the fire chief, but there will only be one access there. Even with, even with the temporary access on Colangelo, to get to the bulb to the west, you have to travel more than 150 meters to get there. And your only two accesses are both more than 150 meters away from it.
That's not the way that it's measured. We have two ways in, so you can go from either direction. So you lose two ways at the point where that red line intersects the, the circle. So that's the way it's looked at. However, the other, the other question about using the Hollage Road, the problem with that is that it's a private, it's, for all intents and purposes, a private roadway. It's not a normal street that gets normally plowed. So there's a concern with respect to the frequency, how, how it gets plowed. Fact is, it could go on for years and years and years, you know, and now it's still the responsibility of a developer 15 years down the road to make sure that that's, that roadway's plowed. I have a concern about, you know, temporary, temporary or private accesses being plowed. It's not on our normal street plowing. We don't have direct access and control of it. So there's a concern from a fire perspective.
Okay. Counselor Morocco?
I'm Mary Daudie. I think that I'm surprised that we don't have legal counsel here tonight, especially when we had some issues here, that I feel like I need to have more information from a legal perspective here on some of this. I support our staff and what they're saying. I think right now, there, when Mr. Richardson is still saying that he still needs to work with staff, I'm not sure that I'm willing to, able to actually make a motion to support anything until he's actually worked with the staff, and staff's going to come back to us and say that they're happy with the deal. And, and Mr. Richardson, just a point, when you're referring to the council-approved, when I look at 2001, I think it's good to say "the council of the day." I wasn't here, and so I'm just making reference.
I'm sorry.
"Council of the day" would be greatly appreciated. But, so just to that point, I'm having a little bit of a difficult time sitting here now, thinking that what I thought was okay seems to be a little bit more of a problem from the legal end, especially if it's safety and getting access from the fire department. We, we've got to do it right.
Okay. Counselor Carrio?
Well, I think there's a lot worse access problems in, in the city than this, but my question would be, how does that affect what we're doing here tonight? This, the thing that's here before us tonight, we're looking at approving this and the access from Mountain Road. Whether or not we give these two lots back, what's that got to do with what we're doing here tonight? Why we, why we even spending this much time on this? It's between the Colangelo, his solicitor, and the city to decide whether or not to fight with our fire department and give that roadway back. It's got nothing to do with what we're doing here tonight. We approve what we're doing here tonight. Whether the city wants to dig their heels in and not give back that road or not, it's another issue. It's got nothing to do with what we're doing here tonight. So to possibly suggest that we defer this, why would we? It's got nothing to do with the plan that's here before us. I might hear that, we may hear that, from the developer. I'm not sure.
Yeah, fair comment, fair comment.
There is an item contained in your staff report that suggests the fire department, in order to use the two walkways combined as access, would require a relining of the lot on Marinelli closest to the walkways to allow the fire truck to turn. Staff didn't recommend it, but they make that comment in the report.
You've been proactive, and yeah, fair enough. Good, that's good. Is there any other comments on, yes, Lee, chief?
Thanks, Your Worship. Just a final statement about the, the distance. Normally, we use a rule of 150 meters as being a maximum distance for we use a rule of 150 meters as being a maximum distance for a dead-end street. This street, if those two lots were removed, would be around 400 meters.
Okay, that's pretty big. Any other questions of Mr. Richardson on this part of the issue tonight? Okay, I think we're good for this point. Thank you very much, Mr. Richardson. Is there anyone else, other than the applicant, who would like to address tonight's report? Anyone other than the applicant? Yep? Yep, sure. Can you just please state your name and your address for the record?
My name is Emily Weatherall. I live at 6666 Mountain Road. I just wanted to clarify my reason for wanting the fence. And city stated that I sounded like we were interested in developing our land at the side. The reason we asked about laterals being put in, we do not, my husband and I are happy living there in a rural setting. We've got two acres, and we want to continue living that rural lifestyle for our grandchildren. We want them to enjoy it as well, because they live right on the corner. So, the reason we asked about the laterals, we're just trying to be proactive. I know we won't live forever, and I'm sure that property will be developed at some point in time. So, when the road is being developed and the laterals are being put in to service the other side, our property is almost, would mirror the street on the other side of the Marinelli property. So, that is why we had asked about the laterals. But I just wanted to make it clear that we were not interested in developing that property at this point in time. So, I think a fence there to provide us with our privacy that we've enjoyed all these years, and if things happen the way they sound right now with the road, if there's a possibility that the one road is closed, the temporary road at the other, more, you know, there's going to be 16 homes plus the other new homes driving past, and that's going to deter our quiet lifestyle that we've enjoyed for the past three to five years.
Mr. Hurlivich, was there any comments on the laterals? I saw in the report, you are going to put, the trees are in the report.
Yeah, so it was with reference to the Lisi property, which is her daughter that she identified, which is, so if you look at that dark outline, the daughter is located immediately to the left of, so the daughter is here, and the Weatherall's property is this. And so, what Mrs. Weatherall is asking for is a fence that would extend this entire distance, probably in excess of 200 meters. Basically, a fence along here. And she's saying that to have a rural lifestyle in the back, and she's looking for that fence. Normally, where we require privacy fences would be between single family and multiple family. That's usually when we ask for fences between development and existing properties. But usually, between single family and single family, we don't ask for fences. Certainly going to be up to this council, and I would think that the developer is going to have an opinion on that. But council can ask for any condition that's reasonable in granting approval to a plan of subdivision.
And the laterals?
Well, the laterals just won't make any sense until we know what the lot pattern is. In fact, when I met with the developers for this development, we talked anywhere from a 12-meter frontage lot, and what they ended up with were 17-meter frontage lots. So, the lots that could develop here, if they develop on 12-meter frontages ultimately, we might put the laterals in exactly the wrong locations. So, it doesn't make any sense to put those laterals in until we know what this development is. And I think Mrs. Weatherall is saying that they're not interested in the laterals, because they're not interested in developing, but she would like the fence. That's what I think I heard.
And also, the possibility of the laterals being put in, so that the road doesn't have to be torn up, et cetera, down the road. Would it not be a good business sense to plan ahead?
It would if you wanted to develop your property, but I understand you don't want to.
Right.
See, I guess the problem is, he's saying he's not sure where they put them. If they're 17-meter frontages or 12-meter frontages, that would move them in the wrong place. So, until they know where, they wouldn't, they're suggesting that they wouldn't put laterals in. And as far as the fence, is there a recommendation for any of that fence, Mr. Hurlivich? Or if not, the full length, is there a portion of it?
We haven't recommended a fence. I might be interested in hearing what the developer has to say, actually.
Okay, okay. We can get that feedback. Thank you very much. Yep, sure, come on down. If you'd please state your name and your address for the record.
Good evening all. It's Tony Lisi from 6646 Mountain Road. And I just wanted to get a clarification on the definition of a city standard tree, if I may.
Okay, Mr. Hurlivich, or is it, because they had requested, I saw, a mature six-foot tree, I think you put.
The, I can't tell you what the, it's not going to be a mature tree. So, what happens is the developer pays for the trees. We go out on contract and acquire the trees after the subdivision is built, and we put the trees in through contract. So, the city actually puts the trees in, and those are priced out at, you know, probably five-year-old specimens, you know, something, they're not going to be mature trees.
Not mature. I think they had six foot, didn't you?
Just my concern is, so when we're traveling westbound on Mountain Road, and you're turning south into the new development, with the, at nighttime, and the amount of vehicles that are there being now considered a corner home, see the amount of traffic coming in with the headlights that are there. I don't know if you've ever seen my home, but it's directly, will be directly in the path of the turning lanes. So, in the evening, or whatever, if anything that could benefit us, because if these trees, by the time they would mature, in a sense where it will reflect some light, or deflect some light, or noise, et cetera, it'll be probably too far gone for me to really enjoy it. So, my concern is the lighting at night on the southbound turns, traveling westbound, because now with the volume of traffic servicing, the 11 homes plus the additional ones further west, that's just going to interrupt the way we live currently. Our living room's directly right in the front of the house. Everything, we are recessed back about 60 feet from the road. So, it's not, it's not too far, in a sense, where you are directly in a turning lane with the headlights.
So, Mr. Lisi's house is on the right-hand side of the screen, behind the sign. So, the roadway is going to come straight through the one tree that we see to the left of the sign.
Right.
And so, his concern is that, say, a car traveling east or westbound is going to turn left into the subdivision. The lights are going to go into the front of the house. The trees that the city is going to plant are going to be deciduous trees. They're going to be like these trees. So, in actual fact, where the headlights are, there's not going to actually be anything that would block the light, because you're just going to have a trunk of a tree. The canopy of the tree is going to be higher than the car. So, I'm not sure that that's actually going to give you the protection you're looking for.
Well, normally, you're going to get a trajectory. So, if you see your trunk on there, you have, your headlight travels high, and it starts low and travels high. So, directly in front of the vehicle will be, you know, your six foot. But as the headlights project, they tend to elevate in distance. So, what I'm coming at, too, is normally when you see entrances into establishments or into subdivisions, there is aesthetically, and probably more, more and less aesthetically, is, you know, your half-wall, or similar to that, to help the corner homes that are there. And also, what I'm trying to, a normal boulevard, would that be about a 15-foot from the property line to the road that is there? Is that standard?
I can't tell you. Jeff, would you know?
So, if you have a 33-foot road, usually, right?
Well, it's a 66-foot wide road allowance, and then we're going to have about 27 feet of that. It's going to be pavement in the middle of that. So, you're going to have, I guess, somewhere around that 12, 14 feet of boulevard.
So, at the end of the day, if it all boils down to, if we can get something a little nicer than a two- or three- or five-year mature tree placed in there, something that's, you know, that's going to have foliage within the first year of being planted, something that's going to give us a little more aesthetic pleasing scenery to look at, in that sense, or a front window rather than curved and sidewalk and asphalt, that's all I would ask the council to take into consideration. And that way, we can move forward, and we are agreeing to this development. So, we're not here to create any roadblocks. We're just here to try to find some means of accommodation.
Okay, so, so our recommendation was the standard two trees, so council would have the option of asking for something larger than our standard tree.
So, we can make that part of the motion when we get to that point of the day.
Right, but it's not going to be a tree the size of the one on the screen.
No, he had put in his note here, "Six foot." That one looks like it's a bit more. Yeah. Okay, thanks, Mr. Lisi. Councillor Peter Angelo?
Thanks, your worship. I just wanted to say, I think that more trees are reasonable, and I know that the Lises have asked for them in the Focos as well. But I wanted to ask through you to staff, is there any type of subdivision entrance markers proposed for this?
There are none proposed. Normally, those would be, actually, they're on private property, and we have a report coming to this council in the near future, because they have been an issue to this council because of the condition of those over the long term. So, they are a maintenance headache. But there wouldn't be any in this location, because we don't actually have daylighting triangles. And so, therefore, if the walls were put up, we wouldn't have the visibility onto Mountain Road. So, without those daylighting triangles, there definitely wouldn't be entrance walls put up.
Okay. Is there anyone else, other than the applicant, that would like to speak to this? Okay, seeing none, we would now ask for the applicant, or his or her representative, to approach and present. Please state your name for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name's Italia Gildertino, partner of Rodrick and Partners here in Niagara Falls. I represent the applicant, 80460 Ontario Limited, and also the current owners of the property, Mr. and Mrs. Marinelli. I have here with me tonight Fred Costable, who is representing the developer, and Mr. and Mrs. Marinelli, that I've known probably for about 40 years of my life, and also their sons and granddaughter, who are also here in support of the application. I'd like to start by indicating that we have read the staff report, together with all the conditions attached, and we agree with the recommendations listed in the report. We have read the letters submitted by the abutting neighbors, being Mr. and Mrs. Foco, Mr. and Mrs. Lisi, and Mr. and Mrs. Weatherall, and we agree with the position set out by the city staff with respect to each of their comments. However, I'd like to point out a few matters to you that have come up just tonight, with respect to the questions and the comments made by the various speakers before me. If you could please take a look at page seven of the OMB order, which was included in the tab, I believe, three, of the materials that were distributed by Mr. Richardson. So, this is the decision that was granted by the chair of the OMB when the matter of the Colangelo Estates was determined. And the chair says, "While the board can sympathize with the Lisi and Foco families, who would prefer not to have a collector road located next to their homes, the board notes they were both well aware this could happen prior to building their homes." So, it's not news to them, it never was news to them, that they could be, or would be, corner lots. However, having heard their comments, I've spoken with the developer, who has agreed with respect to the issue about the trees. The city's standard policy with respect to trees, I understand, is to provide caliper trees that are two inches in diameter, that are approximately 10 to 12 feet in height. So, much taller than me. Much, much taller than me. My client, the applicant, has agreed, rather than just, than providing two of such trees along the sides of each of the Foco and the Lisi properties, they would be agreeable to providing four of these trees. And these are consistent with new subdivision trees that are found within the city. So, I think that is concession that my client, the applicant, is prepared to make, although not required to make, and in addition to what was being suggested by city staff. Now, with respect to the request of the fence by the Weatherall family, we don't understand why we would be required to provide a fence. City staff hasn't suggested or recommended it. We've heard from the Weatheralls that they don't plan on developing the properties, but, property, but 10 years ago, Mr. and Mrs. Marinelli didn't think that they were going to develop the property. So, we don't know. So, for that reason, there's no point in having my client install a fence along that entire length of their property, just to have it taken down at some point in the future. Mr. Hurlivich has addressed the issue of the laterals, I believe, quite clearly. How could laterals be installed when you don't know what the width or the frontages of the lots are going to be, whether they be 10, 12, 15, 25, 30 meters in width? So, it would be way too difficult to have the laterals installed. With respect to the letter submitted by Mr. Colangelo and his solicitor, "While the applicant takes no position with respect to whether lots 14 and 16, and blocks 24 and 25 of Colangelo Estates should be released at this time, we respectfully submit that those requests should not be associated with these subject matters, or expressed as a condition imposed on these applications, because they have already been addressed in the Colangelo Estates subdivision agreement on pages 10, 26, and 34 of the agreement." I believe Mr. Richardson's materials included some of those sections. However, with respect to the matter set out in Mr. Richardson's letter of November 11th, addressed to Mr. Mac, we would like to point out the following. The second paragraph of the staff report on page five states, quote, "The fire department has identified this development as providing an opportunity to reconcile the need for emergency access to the Dell Park subdivision. This would involve extending an emergency lane connection between Lucia Drive and Dell Park Drive across the Hollage Road Trail. To accommodate the fire department's request for access to Dell Park Drive, Block 11, I'm sorry, Block 12 will have to be widened to six meters or 19.7 feet. This will require that the frontages of lots 1 to 3 be reduced by 1 meter or 3.3 feet each. The access to Dell Park Drive would be limited to emergency vehicles only. Without diminishing the safety importance of this request, vehicle access across the Hollage Road Trail has already been discussed, debated, and decided at an Ontario municipal board hearing. This request does not take into account the difficulty presented by the grade differential and the related cost to reconcile this." I have some photos for you. These photos were taken by Ms. Anna Gall, who is a traffic engineer with Urban and Environmental Management, Inc., and who is in attendance with me tonight here, as she was the traffic engineer retained by the developer of Colangelo Estates. And she has indicated that there are significant constraints to constructing an approach roadway from Lucia Drive to the Hollage Road Trail via Block 12 of Marinelli Estates and Block 19 of Colangelo Estates, due to the grade difference. As you can see going through the photos, there's a significant grade difference between the lands within the neighborhood, or within the neighborhoods. I'm further advised by Ms. Gall that the Hollage Road Trail is located on top of an earson embankment, or berm, located between these various residential neighborhoods. Dell Park Drive terminates at the base of the embankment, and there is a driveway to a residence on the south side of Dell Park Drive at the base of this berm, carrying the Hollage Road Trail. Pedestrian stairs are located on the north side of Dell Park Drive to connect the north sidewalk to the recreational trail. There is a fire hydrant on the south side of Dell Park Drive at the base of the embankment. There is absolutely no opportunity to raise Dell Park Drive to the Hollage Road Trail to permit emergency vehicle access from the trail to Dell Park Drive, within the existing constraints. The maximum grade- from the trail to Dell Park Drive within the existing constraints. The maximum grade on the approach roadway that could be utilized by block twelve of Marinelli, of Marinelli Estates and block nineteen of Colangelo Estates would be about eight percent. And assuming the surface of the Hollage Road Trail is two and a, two and a half to three meters above the existing profile of Lucia Drive, the length of the two blocks combined would need to be thirty-two to forty meters. The length of block twelve is less than thirty-two meters, and, and the length of block nineteen of Colangelo Estates is about the same. Therefore, the existing depth of these two blocks is insufficient to build an approach roadway on an eight percent grade. Furthermore, Ms. Gall advises that if the approach road could be established, it would have to be engineered with retaining walls and roadside protections such as guide rails. Who would pay for all these additional costs? It does not seem appropriate that those costs should be imposed on this applicant for the failure of the completion of the emergency access being established at the time of the construction of the Dell Park subdivision. Another option would be to change the profile of the Hollage Road Trail by introducing a series of vertical curves over about a hundred and twenty to a hundred and forty meters to lower the trail by two and a half to three meters to permit an at-grade vehicular connection between Lucia Drive and Dell Park Drive. Again, this would present significant challenges and costs. Again, who would be responsible for these costs? It certainly should not be this applicant, because it's not this applicant's place to correct the errors or the wrongs that were placed by the existing grading of the Hollage Trail and Dell Park Although the fire department has requested that access for emergency vehicles be provided between the proposed subdivision and Dell Park Drive on the south side of the Hollage Road, the staff report does not recommend placing this vehicular access along the trail. As noted, that, as noted, and as Counselor Thompson has also indicated, this matter has been previously discussed, debated, and decided at an O M B hearing. If there are any specific questions with respect to the traffic engineering, Ms. Gall is here and would be pleased to answer any of your questions. We kindly request that you support the applications and approve of same based upon the existing conditions, with the exception of the two additional trees flanking each side of the, the east side of the Leacy property and the west side of the Foco property. So there would be four trees rather than two, and the trees that I'm referring to are the city's street trees, which are the caliper trees. And decide upon Mr. Colangelo's request separately and distinctively from the applications, and not to impose any further conditions. While we appreciate Mr. Colangelo's support of our client's applications through Mr. Richardson's presentation, we must reiterate that these requests must, must be dealt with at a different place and at a different time, due to the contractual nature of those obligations within the subdivision agreement for Colangelo Estates. However, if you proceed tonight to release those conditions, I have to turn your attention to condition thirty-five located within these, located within the staff report. And that would start at the bottom of page twelve. This is a condition that's being recommended by city staff to be imposed upon this applicant, that the owner complies with any applicable regional policies relating to the collection of waste to the satisfaction of the regional public works department, and the owner shall ensure that all streets and development blocks can provide a through access. To provide appropriate circulation for curbside waste collection, the subdivision agreement shall include that the temporary access within the Colangelo Estates subdivision remains until a permanent road access to Mountain Road is established on property to the east of Colangelo Estates. So if you release Colangelo Estates tonight, you put us within a quandary as how do we fulfill our conditions with the Marinelli Estates subdivision, because Colangelo would be released in contradiction to this, to this condition. I would be right, right back here to ask that that condition be removed. So we ask that the release of Colangelo's request happen at a different time, different place, not be imposed as a condition within our subdivision request tonight. And finally, and most importantly, I just, I must clarify that tonight we're here only requesting draft plan approval and not final approval of the subdivision as well.
Okay, thank you. Before we close the meeting, is there any questions from Ms. Gilberti?
Or from Ms. Gall.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Counselor Gates?
Yeah, we're gonna pull, okay. Do you have a question?
Yeah, not necessarily, not necessarily to the solicitor. On, I guess it's page ten of the conditions for the draft plan approval under number thirteen. It says the developer will pay the development charge enforced at the time of the execution of the subdivision agreement. And I'm just wondering if, if that is a discounted development fee or, or not?
Got a comment from the, Mr. Hurlovich, or?
Sorry, could I ask the, the question be repeated? I was referring with the fire chief on another note.
Item thirteen of requirements?
Yes.
On page ten, it's in regard to development charges. Counselor Gates is asking if that's a discounted development charge or, or full charge?
Well, it's a full, full charge. It's the, it's the amount that's in, in effect at the time. So if, when, when they are moving forward with the execution of the subdivision agreement, they pay a portion of the development charges upfront, and then the, when those lots are sold, the builder pays the balance of those development charges. So I guess in a way, is it discounted? The city's gonna collect all of its development charges in the end, but we collect a portion at the time that the subdivision is registered.
Counselor Gates?
Say that again.
We collect a portion of the development charges at the time that the subdivision is registered, and then we collect the balance when the building permits are issued. So it's not discounted. No, we collect, we got the entire.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? Okay, we'll now close the meeting. I would ask for a motion from Member of Council, Counselor Thompson.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I guess this is what happens when you have a small piece of deal development, and you run into all these difficulties. And I look at that plan now, and I see the access on the Mountain Road. It certainly is sparse as far as access is concerned. I can see the concern of the, the fire department. Anyway, I would make a motion that the development be approved as submitted. I would appreciate the comments about the trees. I think four is a good start, but I would suggest that the Foco and Leacy have the opportunity to meet with the developer and planner and whatever to make sure that they know the size, the caliper, the location of trees, to make sure they have adequate protection at that particular time. I'm particularly concerned about the Foco access at the back. Mrs. Foco is not well and uses a wheelchair and has to have access, and I think this is an easy time to make sure that they take that into consideration at, at this time. With the new street lights that are coming in, I think they can be adjusted as far as light is concerned, because that was also mentioned in Mr. Foco's letter. And as far as the Hollage Road, at no time would I support access to Dell Park and the Hollage Road, and at no time would I accept the access of emergency vehicles on the Hollage Road. The people in that particular area have made it extremely clear that they protect their trail, they protect access to their development. We've been all through that, and I certainly don't want to revisit that again. I appreciate Ms. Gilberti's comments with respect to the Hollage Road, but in my opinion, it isn't on the table at all. And if it is, there has to be a whole new look at this through the, with the Dell Park people, because they fought long and hard to make sure that they protected that at that time. So I would make that a motion. We approve that, subject to the trees, the access at the back, and leaving the lots to further dialogue between Mr. Richardson and city staff, including the fire department, to come back as a separate issue to deal with that. I don't think it affects this application whatsoever.
Okay. We've got a motion by Counselor Thompson, second by Counselor Peter Angelo. Any discussion to the motion? Okay, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, it's Next item is subject PD 2011 79, response to the District School, School Board of Niagara regarding disposal, disposal of Battlefield School on Burke Street. There's a recommendation here.
I'll move it.
Okay, moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, second by Counselor Thompson. Any discussion? Okay, call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, it's unanimous?
Counselor, we agree.
Okay, we're on to the mayor's report, the exciting part of the meeting. Ray Toto?
Yes, wizard.
All right, recent events, as we alluded to earlier, Arts and Culture Wall of Fame induction took place. We had seven new inductees, including Frank Schuster, Honeymoon Suite, and of course Johnny D was here tonight, Dead Mouse, who's known more as Joel Zimmerman locally, Brian Smelsky, Bob McAdory, Diane Coatsworth, and the collected artwork and architecture of Oaks Garden Theater. We had that event at the Niagara Square. We thanked them for giving us the wall. It was a great turnout and really excited. Got a lot of, a lot of notoriety this year with our inductees. Winter Festival of Lights kickoff was a big event with Disney, and I know a number of the counselors were there that night, joined me, and we had a lot of fun. The weather was perfect, it was balmy. It was one of the few years that we actually had some nice weather. It was a real treat. Obviously Disney was, was there and the fireworks were outstanding, the kids just loved it. We invite everyone to check out all the new attraction, or all the new displays, and as well, the rink, the Brink will be opening up in December, and lace up your skates and get down there for that. Light of Day Concert, I was able to share the stage with Vinnie Big Pussy Pastore from, from the, anyone watch The Sopranos? He is the, one of the characters on The Sopranos. So he was in town helping to host it, and it was, it was a great event. Packed house, there's about a thousand people there, and raising money and awareness for Parkinson's disease. And we obviously really appreciate all the work that's being done and by Danima and by Dave Rotella and, and all the support that he's receiving. Remembrance Day, thanks to our city staff, to local veterans groups, and the counselors that joined me at the Gale Center that day. It was a great day. We had over a thousand people for this Remembrance Day event, and as well, the week before, we had the same event in Chippewa, at the Chippewa Arena, and that was also a well-attended event. I'm told next year's Remembrance Day is gonna be, because it's a, a leap year, it's gonna be on the Sunday, so that might have a little bit of, tweak things a little bit, but hopefully we'll have our roadway, Throwstone Road all the way into the Gale Center, and it won't take thirty minutes to get out of the, to get out of the Gale Center. World Planning Day, it was brought to my attention that November eighth was World Planning Day for all of our planners. That's an international event held annually to celebrate the accomplishments of planners throughout the world. We're glad to acknowledge our planners for the great work they do, and it's obvious that the, it's the quality of their work that helps us to design things so that our neighborhoods will be enjoyed. It's also a reminder of the responsibility that falls on the planner's shoulders, because the planning they do today will be for tomorrow, and they may not necessarily be around to enjoy those great planning decisions. Current events, as we mentioned earlier, it's Movember, so anyone growing mustaches this month to celebrate the money raising and attention raising for prostate cancer, and we're glad that there's a number of gentlemen that are doing it right now, including our firefighters here in the city. We're proud of them, and we're glad that they've taken up this cause. Upcoming events, the Faces Behind the Giving Event. This is taking place at the Scotia Bank Centre on November the nineteenth. This is an event that will benefit the G N G H Foundation. It's not an NHS event, it's an event for the, our hospital's foundation. And if we want new equipment into, in that hospital, it's a great way to support them. This is the foundation chairman's annual fall ball, and to learn more, just call the G N G H Foundation, or you can go on the website, you can find out more, or call us here at City Hall. Last two items here, Santa Claus Parade is coming up. It's gonna be this Saturday, the nineteenth. It starts at eleven o'clock. It'll be taking place Down Queen Street. We're happy that Santa has agreed to join us again for this event, and of course, as usual, there'll be free hot chocolate, Timbits, face painting, and all sorts of great things, including our new temporary tattoos that I've shared with counsel, counsel here, which will be an extra way of celebrating it. I'm sure that our C A O will have them all over his face, won't he, Mr. C A O? With his dress, that's right. They'll be free, all these free things will take place at the Q Club at twelve thirty afterwards. And last but not least, the Rick Hansen Relay. Tonight I was presented with this keepsake memento, which we will be displaying somewhere in City Hall. It's a replica of his, Rick Hansen's medal that he had. It was twenty-five years ago this week that he came to Niagara Falls. He was greeted by then-mayor Bill Smeaton, and, and it's amazing, twenty years has already gone by. Millions of dollars has been raised, it's been all around the world, and again now across Canada. And Niagara Falls was one of three hundred communities that were chosen to receive the, the, help me, the relay as it came through the city. And we had an end-of-day celebration at the Scotia Bank Convention Center tonight. I know Counselor Gates and Counselor Peter Angelo were there with me as well. We had a performance by Justin Hines, and it was a lot of excitement. And we wanna thank St. Mike's High School, because tomorrow, they're gonna be, have their day two event, as we're gonna have the mayor and a chair, where I guess all, me along with some students will take on the faculty and staff, and we'll be having a bunch of wheelchair events. So I'm sure that'll be an interesting and fun time. So that concludes the mayor's announcements. Moving on to communications and comments of the city clerk. First up, we've got a Niagara Parks Police request. Counselor Thompson? This is a request for financial relief from a false alarm, I guess.
Yes, I, I, I want to, first of all, say I shouldn't be standing up here, being involved in tourism and maybe making some remarks that might be not accepted too well by the Parks Commission. And I wanna start by saying I have the utmost respect for Chief Doug Kane, who's a friend of mine, who wrote the letter. However, is this a joke, or is this, is this serious?
I think it's serious. They've sent him the-
Mr. C A O? How much is two million less three hundred? What, what does that add up to? Are we serious here? First of all, fire protection, who provides that to the Parks Commission?
I believe Chief, is it Chief? He's not doing it right now. We confirm that. It's the city of Niagara Falls, is that right, Mr. C A O?
What about water and sewer services? Who, who provides those to the city?
I think it's the same provider.
And, and here we have a request for three hundred dollars return on this particular issue. Anyway, I guess we have to be fair and sensible about this, but if we got the same through you to the C A O, if we got the same request from a private business in, in the city that seems to be fairly legitimate, if there's a water pressure drop, the alarm system could pick in, how would we treat a private sector business with respect to this?
Well, to you, Mr. Mayor, what, and the chief would usually investigate these. We had this before council about a year ago, and if it was a, a maintenance issue where a property owner was not adequately looking after their system, the charge would stay. If it was a false alarm that was a result of somebody pulling the alarm, and it was beyond their control, then the charge would not apply.
Okay. So where, where, where do you stand with respect to this?
Well, I think they'd have to determine whether or not this was a result of them not adequately maintaining their system. So I think we probably should just refer this back to the chief, and you can get some more information on it.
Okay. So, well, why wouldn't we have done that? You just wanted to have me stand up and make these comments?
Well, I think it was just a point that they wanted to come and have it waived, and at this point, we didn't feel like we could have the amount waived.
I would refer to staff, and I'd really like a report back to see where we stand on this particular issue.
Thank you, Counselor Thompson. So we have a, Counselor Carrillo?
At the same time, Your Worship, could we, could we have a review down of the-
At the same time, your worship, could we, could we have a review down of the false alarm charges within our community, because I get a lot of complaints about this, about false alarm charges. I know we made a decision on it before, but I think we should look at it again.
Maybe the CAO-
I mean, I got some business people paying two million dollars of property taxes, not getting a whole lot from the city, and get charged every time the fire department comes out, it's a bit ridiculous.
It's probably time for a report back, I believe this was before council, well over a year ago, so it's probably time for a report back to let council know where it stands.
Okay, councillor Gates?
Mayor, here, I'm not gonna let the Parks Commission off the hook at all, quite frankly, I think it's one of the reasons why they've lost their way, quite frankly. Bringing something to council like this, over the three hundred dollars, to councillor Thompson's point, I believe, and I don't have the exact figure, but I believe it's close to two million dollars, that I believe that the Parks Commission owes this city. They haven't paid it, and here they are, sending us a bill that they're, we're not being fair, whatever the case may be, for three hundred dollars. I just, I don't get where they're thinking here. I think it's a big mistake for them to put it on the council agenda, I think it's a big mistake for them to not just talk to our CEO, or talk to our mayor and say, "Look, I'd like to talk to you about this issue, let's see if there's something there," but to bring it forward to council, when they owe this city close to two million dollars, I think they've really lost their way on this one.
Yeah, absolutely, and as a matter of fact, yeah, I'm sorry, we lost the clerk's comment.
Yeah, just a comment, the correspondence came through to the mayor's office, but it's addressed to mayor and council, so that's our practice, is to bring it forward for your attention, so I don't think there was anything, you know, untoward what Inspector Kane was doing, Chief Kane was doing, he was bringing it to the attention of the people in power, and looking to see if there would be any relief granted.
But to the discussion here, yeah, obviously, we're all well aware that the Niagara Parks have had a lot of challenges, and unfortunately, some of their challenges have led to challenges for the city. And without getting to all the particulars, I did meet with Minister Chan, Minister of Tourism this past week, and shared a lot of our concerns that we expect immediate results on, and we're not gonna sit back any longer, we're expecting those discussions with resolutions, and he suggested, he directed that we meet with the chairperson, Thompson, Janice Thompson, so we have a meeting set up, where we will be going through these, looking for resolution, we're gonna ask them specifically, what do you expect to do on these issues, how do you plan to resolve them? And you're right, I mean, this is kind of almost, it's almost insulting, you know, when there's several million dollars outstanding, and yet, our fire service is still attacked, the water and sewer is still working fine, and then we get a request for a three hundred dollar refund on a false alarm charge from our fire department. It's a little bit frustrating, but, but like I say, we were very blunt with Minister Chan, our CAO was with me, and same with our economic development officer, and we made it real clear how we feel about this, and how we expect it to be resolved, so now we'll be taking that up with Janice Thompson. Councillor Peter Angelo?
Thanks, your worship, and I just wanted to say, in all fairness, I guess, to the chief, I mean, I know we are a bit disgruntled about the fact that we haven't been paid for the last two years from the Parks Commission, but I don't think that the chief is involved in those discussions.
Right.
So he probably wrote this letter, you know, on his own, you know, thinking that maybe the funds were gonna come out of his budget, not really, you know, in touch with what happens on the other side of it.
Yeah, absolutely, and that's why, and I'm glad, we're just gonna refer this back to staff, because I'm sure it's none of his doing, he's an excellent chief, and we just need, we have a much bigger issue that we're dealing with right now, absolutely. So, do we have, yeah, motion referred to staff by councillor Thompson?
Yeah, we think he was told.
No comment. Seconded by councillor Morocco, all those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous, thank you. Mister Clerk? Yeah, on that issue, Mister Clerk?
Yeah, just some clarification, so is the motion including what councillor Carrion talked about, a report from staff on this specifically, or a report on fire alarms in general?
I could treat them the same.
Okay, councillor Morocco, yeah, you're good with that too? Okay.
Then, your worship, I'm suggesting that, then, depending on the outcome, we would treat everyone the same.
Right, absolutely. Okay, Mister Clerk, are there any additional items for council's consideration?
Yes, one, your worship, that's in your handouts, and that's a request from the Niagara Region Metis Council for a flag raising on Wednesday of this week.
Moved by councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Gates. All those in favor? Okay, opposed? Okay. Reports? Okay, first, we've got F 2011-51 Fee for Service.
I would move that.
Okay, moved by councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Maves. Is there any discussion to the recommendation, where we're looking to reclassify the funding category for Project Share, Niagara Falls Art Gallery, as fees for service? And see, yeah, councillor Thompson?
Yeah, I support the resolution, simply because I think the experiences that we're going through now are very similar to what we did in 1980, '79, and that's when Project Share was actually started, and actually, Project Share was in City Hall, in the basement, with the shelves, and I managed to find a picture of that from 1979, and it eventually went out and went into the volunteers and the private sector, and so, it actually started in City Hall, and was a service that we created because of the difficulties, which were much more difficult then, than I think we have now. We had twenty-two percent interest, a lot of people lost everything that they had at that particular time, and I know when I was here, we spent half of our time going out and meeting with unemployed groups, trying to determine how we were going to create employment. So, a fee for service, I think, is appropriate to get back on track with the Project Share, but I think there has been a substantial escalation over the years because of the need, and because of getting into other services, not just food, but also rooms, and I know that this is something that I've talked with the CAO on a couple of times, this is actually a service, in my opinion, that should be provided by the regional government, and also the provincial government, and I think we should be working towards making sure they take on that responsibility. They're already suggesting that Project Share is coming here because of loss of additional revenue from the regional government, which, in my opinion, at this time, is really unfair and unreasonable. I think we should be having a report back, and also efforts put forward to the provincial government and the regional government, to take on the responsibility of looking after these responsibilities of food for people who are in need these days, and not putting it on the residential taxpayers, should come from the province. So, I think we have to have a policy in place that monitors this, I don't think we can just say, "This is fine," and escalation each year. I think as the cyclical aspect of employment and unemployment takes place, I think that we should certainly look at that at budget time, to make sure that we control that, but I think we really, in earnest, have to try to see if we can get the senior levels of government to get serious about funding this very serious problem, which is their problem, in my opinion. But in the meantime, I think we have to support the need that exists in our community.
Councillor Carrion.
Just going along the line of what councillor Thompson was saying, why would we put this into fee for service? When we all believe that this is not a service that should be provided by the taxpayers, the citizens of Niagara Falls, it should be provincially provided, or at least provided by the region. So why would we not leave it standing out as a grant, that the city provides to the Project Share, and continue our fight to get the other levels of government that are responsible for this service, to come forward and accept their responsibility, and look after this type of service? So why would we want to put it into this, Mister Todd?
Councillor CAO, a comment?
Well, through you, Mister Mayor, for the last two years at least, we've presented reports to council about grants, and last year, we were challenged by the council, and we made it very clear to you that we should get out of the grants business. That was not supported by this council, and there are services like Project Share, that over the years have been supported by council, and what we're simply saying is, if they're a fee-for-service organization, if they're a service that you believe is something that we should provide money for, then they fall into that category. That way, our staff can work with Project Share to ensure the services that they're providing for us, that the money that we're providing them, that we're getting good value for that. Right now, we don't have that relationship, we basically hand over a check, and that's the end of the relationship. In a fee-for-service arrangement, we're actually sitting down with the organizations and determining what we're getting, what value this council is getting for the money. Our belief still is, is that this council should get out of the grant business, because if it's not core to your business, you shouldn't be funding it. So, we're saying here tonight, that you've determined over the last number of years, that Project Share is a core service, it's a service that you wanna continue to fund, so we should get them in a fee-for-service arrangement, and then our staff can have a better dialogue with them, and we can determine what value that the taxpayer is getting for the money that we provide.
Just to follow up on that, your worship, I don't disagree, I'll support the motion if that's what you believe, I just don't believe that this council should give up on the fight to get this to be paid for where it shouldn't be paid for.
Yes, and I don't believe this, I don't believe this gives up on a fight or further dialogue that we'll have about having this funded at senior levels of government, I just think it says that the relationship will change, where there will be a direct accountability between the organization and the staff, to determine that we're getting a good value for that, for that dollar. It doesn't mean that we're gonna stop the fight to say, these services should be provided, perhaps provincial-wide, by higher levels of government.
Okay, we've got councillor Maves, councillor Morocco, and councillor Thompson. Councillor Maves?
Yes, your worship, I noticed even farther down, too, we have a resolution whereby the, the region has declined to send any money for the homeless, the Niagara homeless services, and I wonder if we couldn't address that at the same time we're dealing with that, because we have people from Project Share here, and I think that possibly, that resolution, it should be well documented, that the region has dropped that funding, and I think we should possibly put forward that resolution right now along with this, if that's possible.
Okay, we can do that, we can move the two concurrently. Councillor Morocco? Also, I'd like to acknowledge, we've got the chair of the board, chairman of the board, Mister Brian Pellos here from Project Share as well, so, welcome.
Hi, thank you, your worship, just to the point in regards to fees for grants, if we put them in for fee for service, and this is directed through you, your worship, to Mister Todd, are we able to then take them out later on, once we're able to negotiate, maybe with the province, that they will now fund it? So, it's, we're not locked into that we give it to them forever and ever, once the, maybe we get to the province, that's what I just wanted.
No, with the arrangement done-
And I support them one hundred percent, because, you know what, I think it's really a terrible thing that happened, that the region just cut them off, and now, where are they gonna get this funding from? And I think, you know, I support, we've had this conversation with councillor Thompson and Carrion, we all support it, everyone around this table supports Project Share, and there's a great need, but I think it's at the wrong level that the funding is coming from, and for the region to just kinda drop the ball and wash their hands of it was just totally not acceptable. So, I think now we have to have a stronger mark up there, to go after the province, to really help this need, and housing alone, I mean, it goes hand in hand, it's just absurd. So, anyway, I'm just, sorry-
But the fee-for-service arrangement puts it into a realm that, from year after year, our staff would be sitting down with the Project Share staff, and perhaps the board, and determining what we believe is the appropriate level of funding. It could be based on previous year's statistics, Project Share could be showing a greater demand in a given year, they could have a lesser demand in future years, and that's the kind of dialogue we would sit down. But what it does, it takes them from the realm of a grant, where we continue to say that we should be out of the grant business, because it's not core to your business.
And I have to say, I do support you, but it's really tough to have these people come and present these, you know, wishes to us, and I know, we've gotta stop, so we've gotta stop somewhere, and I think we need to start-
And what council would determine here, based on the approval of this report, would be that, that Project Share then would go into the realm of that fee for service. So you're saying, it's part of what we should be doing, and if it someday it came where it was, could totally be funded at a senior level of government, we would simply get out of the business, and we would not renew that fee-for-service agreement that subsequently-
Good, but then I can support going into the fee-for-service, because it's more accountability on our behalf with these organizations. Great, thank you so much.
Okay, councillor Thompson?
Yes, through you to the CAO, could you give me the same information about the Niagara Falls Art Gallery, and who owns it, how did we get into this, what, what's the reason for funding an art gallery?
Our, our recreation staff and our treasurer, Mister Harrison, they've been meeting with a number of the fee-for-service groups, and the premise behind organizations like the art gallery, is we ask ourselves, if we weren't providing that programming, if they weren't, would we have to be providing it? And our recreation people are saying, those are the kind of programs that other communities provide, artist programs or programs for youth, that we don't provide ourselves. It's a partnership with them, where they're providing that service on our behalf. So what we're saying is, in that relationship, it's a fee-for-service, because it's not a grant, they're out there providing those programs or programming on our behalf, and if they weren't providing it, our staff would be recommending that we put certain programs like that, perhaps at, you know, the McCain Center, or at the Senior Center, or something like that, where we would be having hands-on, providing some of that. The actual gallery itself, I'm not sure about the ownership of the gallery, and it's really not the point of the gallery, it's the programming that we're funding, we're not really, these dollars are not funding the actual building, they're funding the programs that go on in the building for the youth, and that's the premise behind this.
Yeah, councillor Gates?
Thank you, just, just quick, I agree with councillor Maves on, we should maybe do the resolution to the region as well at the same time. I can't believe that the region has decided to cut the funding to Project Share in Niagara Region for a few reasons. Obviously, the fact that we have one of the highest unemployments in the country in the Niagara region, we have one of the lowest median income in the country, in the Niagara region, and I, you know, you can agree or disagree, and I have no problem doing that with, with staff, but I still believe that you still have an obligation to take care of the less fortunate in our community, and the less fortunate in the Niagara region. I really think the Niagara region has really dropped the ball here, I sent, I think they've sent a terrible message on what their priorities are, particular in the hardship, and I don't know if there's anybody in this room that doesn't have somebody in their family that's out looking for a job, or has lost their job, or had a plant closed, or are trying to get by on minimum wage, and with no pensions and no benefits, and Project Share does incredible, incredible work, and I can appreciate Mister Todd saying it gives us some credibility, but I don't think anybody around this table is ever questioning the quality of work that's done at Project Share, and the need that's done in that facility, year-round, in particular with Christmas coming up, if you have extra, it's a good time of year to get involved with Project Share and volunteer some time as well. But I'd really like to see that resolution with councillor Maves go forward, I'd second it for sure, that I really think the Niagara region, and other levels of government, I'm not just saying the region, have an obligation to take care of those that unfortunately, in no fault of their own, may fall on some of these hardships, and have to rely on some of these services in our communities.
Thank you. Councillor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, thanks, your worship, and I listened to Mister Todd say that, you know, the permissive grants, the staff keep advising council to get out of, and I think that's part of the reason why, you know, some groups have now come forward and said that they wanna move from the permissive grant side to the fee-for-service side, because if they, they feel that they're more secure in their funding if they're on the fee-for-service side, and I can understand the recommendation, and it makes total sense, I mean, Project Share deals with basic needs, and if that organization wasn't providing those needs, then surely, that need would fall back on City Hall. And in terms of the art gallery, I'm not sure if anyone is aware, but, I mean, they do have children's programs, they have adults' programs, they run the children's and adults' programs every single day of the summer, actually, and they're all pretty much week-long programs, they also run them on the weekends, and then on most holidays, and I agree with Mister Todd, I mean, I thought, like, I think both of them provide a great service in our community, that if they weren't doing it, the owners would fall back on City Hall.
So we've got two motions from councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Maves, is that right? Moving the recommendation and the resolution at the same time?
Yes.
Okay, so we've all heard the motion? Pardon me?
I made the motion.
I checked with the clerk, he said it was-
Yeah, who cares?
Okay, we'll call, we'll call the vote. I checked with the clerk, he's the one that told me. Review the tapes, how's that?
Review the tapes.
All I know is, there's a- All I know is there's a picture of a guy here, he's got the same mustache that he had 25 years ago.
Black and white photo, but yeah.
Yeah, black and white. Okay, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. All right, great. Thank you very much. Next issue up here is PD 2011-64, Glenhome Road Allowance. And I know in attendance-
Oh, no, Habitat for-
I'm sorry, I skipped ahead. I'm sorry. Habitat for Humanity, 2011-52. And in attendance, I've got Alastair Davis and Craig Fowler from Habitat for Humanity. Welcome, gentlemen. We've got a recommendation here, Counselor Mays, or Counselor Gates. Moves the recommendation, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. Is there any discussion to the recommendation? Okay, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. And now to PD 2011-64, Glenhome Road Allowance. What, were we missing something here, Mr. Clark?
PD 2011-64 was the old report about the Glenhome Road Allowance-
It was.
-how we got to this point. It's just background for council.
You're exactly right. Thank you, that's why we've got, that's why we've got Toto in the room. Okay, thank you. All right, I guess next is financial matters. We've got Director of Finance, who's going to be doing a presentation.
The, tonight, we're providing you with a bit of a, an update on the 10-year capital plan and the work that staff has been doing. This is really the second part of our, our run-up to the 2012 budget. This, the issue of investment in our capital needs is something that's going to be preeminent in our 2012 budget, but it's also for the balance of council's term. Tonight's presentation is only for information purposes and we're not expecting any decision making. However, we are looking for any feedback that you may have. The report is going, the presentation is twofold. There's going to be myself talk, a bit of the background, where we're at, and some important issues in regards to the 10-year capital plan. And then, Mr. Holman is going to just provide an overview of some of the work that's been done on the municipal works side. It's our intention that we would have all the departments as part of the 2012 capital budget do similar types of presentations. We had hoped that we would have this information ready prior to the, prior to the starting of the operating budget, but this is turning out to be a bigger undertaking than we expected. You will have this information prior to dealing with the capital budget and it's, this report is really, or this, this presentation is really an intention just to provide a high-level overview of the direction that staff sees that we need to move to. So, the next slide is basically a summary of what we're going to be talking about, the staff initiatives that we've taken to date, and just a general overview of what tangible capital assets are, the changes in accounting treatment that have led to this point, the critical thing is, why is this important to council at this time? How's the replacement of new capital assets and our existing capital assets funded? And where are we at today? So, as you, as you recall, about five years ago, the accounting body took it upon themselves to change or to start moving towards changes in how the accounting for capital assets are undertaken. And that, that resulted in the initiative called PSAB 3150. Basically, it ended up with requiring staff to do an enormous amount of work and it was a four-year, three, three-and-a-half-year corporate project that entailed most staff in this regard. It has huge impacts on our balance sheet when you looked at the financial statements which were passed at the previous council because it has the inclusion of the, of all our capital assets. So, the next step obviously is to work towards developing a capital needs program. What are tangible capital assets? Basically, they are any non-financial asset that is held for use, implying that we're using them, that they're not held for sale, they have an economic life beyond the current year, and as I said, they're not held for sale. So, even though we have arenas that we're trying to dispose of because we've built the brand-new Gale Center, these, these are still in our asset category because we're not in the routine of flipping, building and flipping arenas. So, some of the examples would be things like roads, bridges, sidewalks, all the things that you would under, you would normally see. Obviously, the city's sewer and water systems are a huge part of it, land and buildings, vehicles and machinery, information technology, office equipment. I talked about the changes in accounting that are, that have been undertaken. Under the old system, it was fund accounting. Tangible capital assets were not anywhere on our balance sheet. So, there was really no, council was not getting during those years any understanding of what the condition of the assets were. The capital budget was basically based on the amount of money that was put forth at the time. Projects were established based on need, however those needs were determined at that time. The new basis of accounting has forced us to look at what the book values of these assets are. As I talked about in our three-to, three-and-a-half-year, four-year program, we've valued all the assets. We've had to come up with a series of policies in regards to the recording of assets. We've had to make assumptions on the estimated useful life of these assets. We've also had to put into our income statement the cost of the use of these assets, which is called amortization. And this is everybody that's seen balance sheets and income statements for regular businesses has a full appreciation of what amortization is. It's basically the cost of the use of those assets over a period of time. And since they're on our financial statements, the auditors now have an obligation to evaluate the balance sheet strength. And the balance sheet, our balance sheet is very strong. However, we do need to look at the long-term necessity to replace those assets and it is important. So, why are these important? Well, I just kind of let the cat out of the bag, there's two reasons. And these are the strategic goals that council's established. We're basically in the same position that all municipalities are. They're, they're dealing with these assets on their balance sheet and dealing with the fact that auditors are giving opinions on the devaluation and the reinvestment programs. But it's even greater than that. The real simple reason is, is that we have this continuing two-sided coin that we need to deal with. First of all, there's a responsibility to sustain the infrastructure, meaning all of those assets that we have invested in over the history of the city of Niagara Falls will at some point either need to be replaced in the great majority of cases because we're not going to be able to eliminate water mains and sewage lines and roads and various things. So, those things will have to be replaced. And then, the other side of the coin is, we need to have a long-term financial plan that makes it fiscally sustainable because we certainly can't go with wild fluctuations, spend enormous amount of money on capital projects in one year and then the next year do nothing. We need to have a long-term financial plan that allows us to do those things. So, as I talked about, these are really important. When we look at our assets that we have and they, they number right now just over $800 million, and when you put the work in progress in place, it's over $900 million. But we need to replace those assets. We will need to replace those assets over the, in the next number of years. We also have new assets that are coming onboard. Some are growth-related and as you recall, DCs are, are developed with an intention of, of funding those types of growth-related assets. But then, there are other types of examples where assets are developed and they're not growth-related, that they are in fact having to be funded out of the existing resources of the city. An example would be the new arena, the Gale Center, the extension of Thorl Stone Road is a regional project. However, there are city assets that will be developed as part of that, and Mr. Holman will talk a bit more about it. But I mean, the sidewalks and the underground services will need to be developed to, to get to the, get to the arena. The capital investments, much like we were talking a little bit earlier about fee-for-services, but the capital investments must be consistent with core municipal services. We have to be ensuring that the, the limited funding that we do have to replace and to add new assets falls within the core services that the city has. Obviously, economic theory, theory of scarcity exists. Scarcity implies that the decisions are recorded when required, when resources are scarce and resources are, are less than the needs. To make proper decisions, we need to be able to put the proper information from the council. So, just as a quick understanding, we see that capital assets are funded from a variety of sources. The general purposes are tax budget, the water and sewer utility budgets. We receive annually federal gas tax money. We receive provincial gas tax money that's dedicated strictly to transit. We receive, we have received in the past federal provincial grants, but there's, there's no guarantee on any of those monies. It's unlike the old days when the, both the feds and the provinces contributed direct grants for infrastructure. Now, they, they, they announce new prog, programs like they did under the stimulus funds and the Rink projects. We get into regional cost-sharing agreements. We have third-party agreements where developers or people have invested interest in a particular area that may contribute to a project. We can use debt and that was part of our first information sharing report. And so, we, we can certainly see that there's a variety of sources. If we look at 2011, we can see that basically the money that we've dedicated ourselves, other than DCs, and as I did talk about, DCs are for growth-related projects, but we can see that the utility budgets provided 4.1 and 4.2 million respectively, and those are generated from the fees, the user fees charged. The allocation of the tax budget or the general purposes budget, 4.4 million. Federal gas tax, we get annually 2.5 and the transit gas tax is $600,000. So, it's about 1,509, 15,009,000. It's interesting to note that the tax budget is used for all non-unility items. So, roads, buildings, fleet, fire, parks, and transit, other than the dedicated $600,000, which is about the cost of a one-and-a-half buses, is, is generated from the 4.4 million dollars or new debentures or third-party funding. So, the next, the next chart really identifies for council where we're exactly at right now with our assets. This, this, this kind of highlights a few things for you, the various classification of, of assets, the historical costs, the age of those, the average age of those historical costs, the accumulated accumulation, amortization, meaning that's what we've used up from a book standpoint, based on the estimates, and then obviously the net book value. I'd like to draw yourself to a couple of, a couple of key points. There's a slight, for those of you that remember from the financial statements that the auditor provided, our, our net, our gross historical cost is about $930 million at the end of December 10th, so there's a difference of about $110 million. That's what's in with at the end of the year. Things like the convention center, the museum projects and various other infrastructure projects that were underway have added up to that. You can see that's a significant increase in the asset base of the municipality. We can see that the average age of assets highlighted in, in the second column shows that for roads and vehicles, or we can see that, yeah, we can see that the roads and vehicles, the amortization is actually greater than 50% of what the historical cost is. And that's, that's highlighting a problem that's going to be coming forward for us in the sense that we will need to replace those assets. So, if you look at the summary point of that chart, is you can see that our accumulated amortization is about $300 million, indicating that we will need to set plans to replace those assets as well as to deal with new assets that come onboard. The next chart is a, is a summary of the comparison between the average age and the useful estimated life of these assets. The average age of the roads, as we identified, is about 40 years. Obviously, we've been replacing roads as we've been each and every year. We can see that the estimated useful life is a range between 25 and 75. And that may seem odd to you, but it, it really isn't when you think of the road consists really of four primary investments. We have the road top and then we have the sub-base and then we have the base. The base, the, the, the sub-base, the really bottom part of the road is estimated that we would have to replace, and these are on engineering standards, every 75 years. The road base would be every 50 years and the top of the road would be 25 years. So, you can see that if the average age is 40, we would relate that we would need to put, start to put some significant investments into these areas. And you can go through the same, same things for all the other categories. This is just to provide some general information for council. So, we're stuck with the approach and this is what we're going to be going through in our capital budgeting process, is what is the long-term financial commitment is appropriate? The next chart will show that. We have four basic approaches. We can go with the historical cost approach, which basically is the amortization of the, of, of the, of the assets, which in, in 2010 was just over $15 million. We can go with what we've historically approved, which is about $15.9 million. So, you know, if you took the perspective of, that we're funding the amortization, I guess we're doing okay. Unfortunately, with the amortization, we're really histor, we're, we're financing the historical cost of the asset, not what the replacement cost is. You know, the replacement cost is probably three to four times what the historical cost is, depending on the asset. The third approach is a needs-assessed approach. Basically, this is the approach that staff is taking. We've asked all our, with all our departments to go through their, their assets that they control in their various departments and ask them to come up with what is the condition of those assets that they have. This will be to identify what the true needs are over the next 10 years. Once we do that across the board, we'll be in a position to come to council and say, this is the financing that we need as we move forward. And it's a recognition that it's a long-term approach. The fourth bullet point is the debt management strategy. As we talked about, there probably will be a use, a need to use debt financing in the future to address some of these capital needs. But until we go through the process of all of the items in item three, we're really not in a position where we can do that. So, turning to the last step is the action steps for the capital budget. We have a 10-year capital needs by department, will be completed for council's consideration. We'll be looking at different financing strategies that, that council can endorse so that we put some of these needs in a long-term perspective. We'll also be providing enhanced reporting. The next council meeting, you'll be receiving a biannual report on the status of the current capital projects that were approved in 2011. We'll be looking for, as I said, how the current projects in 2012 tie into those 10-year plans. And while this year was an unusual year in the sense that the prices that we received towards the end of the years when we've gone out and tendering, previous historic information would suggest that we need to get some pre-approval of cap, of some capital programs earlier in the year so that we can get better pricing. So, now I'm going to turn it over to Jeff, just to kind of talk about a few things that he's been working on in municipal works, just to give you a context of what is- he's been working on in Municipal Works, just to give you a context of what is coming.
Thank you very much. I wanted to take a couple of minutes just to give you some additional information on how we're going to approach the council's strategic priority on achieving infrastructure sustainability, and also how much money we should spend and how do we go about determining the priorities. The Capital Works program is basically has four main drivers. The joint venture projects, which are projects that are driven by others, where we are a funding participant because it makes sense to improve our infrastructure. Growth-related capital projects are projects that are driven by new development, and for the most part funded by new development, but require our resources to coordinate. There's new capital projects, which are projects that, because of certain opportunities perhaps were not anticipated, not included in any long-term forecast, but it makes sense to incorporate them into the current budget. The one I want to talk about the most is the fourth leg, which is our infrastructure needs assessment, and that's basically a strategy to deal with what we currently already own and have an obligation to maintain. So we develop a 10-year infrastructure needs assessment, which basically looks at all facets of our operation, and involves completing a complete inventory of everything we have and assessing its condition, and looking at opportunities to establish priorities so that we can get the best value, and doing the work, but not always the worst-first type of strategy, but where we can get the best bang for our buck. So a couple of examples, some of the larger examples I've provided for you on the next couple of slides. The first dealing with road resurfacing, reconstruction, and rehabilitation program. Each section of our road systems has been evaluated and rated on a scale between very good to very poor, and you'll see on the next slide that we're taking into consideration the number of potholes, amount of cracking, pavement deflection. And from our assessment, we've determined that 48 lane kilometers of paved urban roads are in the poor category, 1.9 kilometers are in the very poor category, and in our paved rural road system, we have 44.4 lane kilometers and 7.7 lane kilometers. These investments over the next 10 years are going to represent an annual requirement of approximately $3.2 million. Likewise, on our bridge and culvert replacement program, you can see that there are about 36 culverts and bridges that will be required to have either rehabilitation or replacement in the next 10 years, requiring an annual investment of just under $1.4 million per Our storm sewer system, although we're only looking to replace less than 1% of our storm system, will require an investment of about $2.7 million per year. And our water main replacement program requires significant investments of $5.2 million a year to get rid of those water main sections that have been rated in the poor and very poor category. With respect to our sanitary sewer system, we're looking, in order to completely separate our system, it's going to take us well over 20 years. So what we're doing is targeting those sections of sanitary sewer that are in poor condition, or those projects where sewer separation can take place on the poor or very poor road sections within our municipality. And if we focus just on that amount, we're looking at above $5.7 million per year. In the rural area, we're looking at municipal drain projects that will provide outlets for our road system to help protect our investments out there, and we'll need to make an investment of about $75,000 per year. These are just some of the programs that we've completed, our reviews. We're still working on some of these others. Most of them will be completed. The annual review will be complete by the end of this month, and we'll be able to bring back some numbers. But just with those numbers that we've provided already to you, you can see on the next slide, those six categories alone already exceed the amount of funding that we have available to us. So we're going to need to find some way to take an appropriate approach to target just exactly what our level of funding should be. And although it's admirable, it's probably unrealistic to assume that we'll be able to completely fund our capital needs deficit, at least over the next 10 to 15 years, without any major cutbacks in service. One thing to remember that if we don't make our timely capital investments, you're going to pay for it on the operating side. So if you don't replace your water mains, you can expect to have more loss of service, more water main breaks to repair, and eventually you're going to have to replace those water mains. So it's important that you get the right, you hit the right target with respect to funding. What we're proposing to do is put all the information together in a report card, which will help us understand just exactly how we're doing. In these projects here, you can see in our road system, we're funding about 84% of what we really should be funding in order to address the poor and very poor road sections. So if you look at the rating column, you see that some of the numbers aren't that bad, with the exception of storm. And as I mentioned, our target would be ideally to hit 100%, but I can tell you that there's not too many municipalities in Ontario that are achieving that goal. So this will also be able to tell us maybe where we're spending too much money, and maybe where we want to redirect some of our resources to some of the other components of our infrastructure, and where we should be scaling back. So I guess in summary, once we've identified, once we've identified our 10-year capital needs, we're going to have a long-term, stable funding stream that's going to help us make priority-based decisions. We're going to make decisions based on the condition of our infrastructure, not just the age of it, and identify where we're going to get the best value for our investments. We're going to look at rationalization across all departments. So although this chart shows that we need more money, it may be we just need to spend what we have differently, but over the long run, we're going to need to look at increasing the amount of money we're spending on replacing our existing infrastructure. And then finally, it's important that we align our capital projects with the needs of the community. We need to understand the consequences of our decisions, what we do, what happens if we do fund them, and what happens if we don't fund them. So we hope to have this package all together within the next couple of months, and hopefully it will be easier for the council and the public to understand why we're making the decisions we are with respect to which projects get included and which ones have to be set back a number of years.
Thank you very much, Mr. Holman. Are there any comments or questions from council? Councilor Peter Angelo?
Thanks, Your Worship. I just had a question, if Mr. Arquita could kindly go back to the slide before this one. As you show us this slide, and you say at the top of it that it's a sample of a report card of sort of how we're doing, and I understand that each department is going to have their different programs that are going to be listed there, and then we're going to get a rating, sort of in the right-hand column, of how we're funding it. Is it staff's intention that we hit a certain target in terms of the rating of funding, or is it staff's intention to always hit 100%? Or are these those types of discussions that you want staff and council to have in regards to what our priorities should be?
The answer to that is not so simple, because what this exercise is going to show, while this is only five areas of Municipal Works, we have the entire corporation that we have to provide this to you. It'll be our intention that we provide that information to you, show you where we're spending money currently, tell you what that rating is, that percentage of what's necessary, and then it'll be staff and council's determination together as to where you want to spend that money, to spend the money. First, there'll be a decision as to, do you want to spend an increased amount of money? What I think the previous presentation plus this chart is showing is that over the long term, not in 2011, not in 2012, but over the long term, we need to increase our investment in our assets. We need to replace these assets that we have, and we have to make the best decisions on replacing of those assets. And as Mr. Holman said, that may be looking at different projects where we do a combination of things. So we're putting the cart ahead of the horse by showing you a sample of what we would like to do, but I think this is, we like to put it in front of you, so it's a fairly easy-to-read presentation that you can get a real close view of what, how we can measure success, and that's really what it is. And it'll be up to council to determine what types of investment. I mean, council's the decision-maker. It'll be council's decision to say how much we invest, because as I said in my presentation, it's a two-edged sword. It's a two-edged coin. Every municipality is going to have an infrastructure deficit. It's inevitable. The affordability, how much we pay in property taxes, how much the businesses and residents can afford to pay, is really the other side of the coin, right? So what that chart's trying to do is show what we're funding, what our funding needs are, and saying what the proportion of share is.
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship, and that's why I asked the question, because I hear Mr. Harrison and I hear Mr. Holman as well, say that it's unrealistic to expect that City Hall is going to come up with 100% of all the money to do all of these projects. So that's why I think that, I mean, and hopefully we get some guidance from staff in terms of where staff would like the money spent, but that's a discussion that's going to be open to council. I mean, I would feel uncomfortable, as I look at this chart, if we only had a 33% rating in replacing our water mains, because, I mean, water mains are, I guess, clean and potable water is essential. I mean, whereas perhaps we look at, you know, storm sewers and think that they're not as essential as water mains. So obviously, it's a discussion that council's going to have down in the future.
Counselor?
Yeah?
And thank you, and I can tell you that both the treasurer and the Director of Public Works and all of their staff have been putting a lot of time trying to get this information for you. The purpose of tonight was to send you away and get you thinking about this, because as we come back with more information and more detail, it's really a discussion that we need to have, and we're not necessarily standing before you saying this is a bad news story. It's just presenting you information that I'm not sure council's had presented in this way, to kind of give you an idea of where we stand. And those are going to be discussions that we're going to have. Mr. Harrison presented a fairly detailed report a couple of meetings ago on some debt management strategy. So when we take a look at all of the sort of financial needs, coupled with some discussion on our debt strategy, based on what our operating costs are, we hope that this kind of information will help focus council as to where we think the appropriate funding levels will be. And at the end of the day, council may determine that the funding levels we have now are adequate, but this will at least allow you to look through these ratings, determine whether we're spending too much in one area and not enough in another, and at the end of the day, get the appropriate level of spending. But as Mr. Harrison says, we just wanted to get you thinking about it tonight, and we'll be back having a much more detailed discussion as we get into the detailed budget, probably in the next month and a half.
Any other comments, council? Okay, maybe a motion to receive the report? By Counselor Peter Angelo, second by Counselor Carrio. All those in favor? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Municipal Works Matters, we've got MW 2011-51 Fairview Cemetery Winter Maintenance Policy. This came as a result, we had a gentleman, Joe Santagata, came in to visit us, that I guess he used to, as you see by his note, used to walk in the cemetery. We're just asking, and if we could just ask you, Mr. Holman, just before we move on on this, did this service previously exist, or do we know a timeline, how long it's been as it is?
Mr. Mayor, all I can do is comment on what our staff recalls. They don't recall ever calling in people on overtime basis to come in and plow the snow on the weekends unless there was an intermittent or some other activity that was planned. So what we're really doing is reaffirming our current level of service, which really falls in between the trails maintenance and our roads maintenance. And I appreciate the fact that a lot of people like to use this area. We have, within the last year or so, constructed a new sidewalk on the west side of Stanley Avenue, which can provide recreational opportunities. The level of service for winter maintenance is higher than what we would otherwise provide on any other trail. But generally speaking, this is the level of service that we have provided in the past. I know that Mr. Santagata perhaps has a different recollection of that, or maybe has some different information, but I'm just relying on information from my staff.
So typically, we don't have staff in on Sundays that would be doing things like that. They'd have to be called in?
They would be, they wouldn't be called in just to plow the roads.
Right, right. Right, in the wintertime, that's what I'm saying. Right, exactly. Okay. Is there any comments or motion from council on the recommendation? Okay, moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Carrio. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, MW 2011-52, Preakness Neighborhood Park Playground Improvements. We have a recommendation before us. Is there a motion of council? Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Carrio. Is there any discussion to the motion, or to the resolution? All those in favor? Okay, it's approved. Ratification of, well, now we're going to do, Mr. Clerk, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah. Due to the Rick Hansen event, we couldn't schedule the in-camera item prior to council meeting this evening, so we will be having that in-camera session at the conclusion of the meeting. Any ratification from that session will be done at the next council meeting, so we won't be rising and reporting here tonight.
Okay. So we've got first resolution, we've already approved. Second one, second resolution, do we have desire of council on the second resolution? Does there anybody want to move the, moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Maves? Any discussion to it? Okay, all those in favor? All right, thank you. Now we're on to the consent agenda. Okay, that's the consent agenda? Okay. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Gates. Any questions to the consent agenda? All those in favor? Okay, it's moved. On to the bylaws, Mr. Clerk, are there any additional bylaws or amendments?
There was some slight wording changes to bylaw 2011-136, which were included in your handouts this evening. Other than that, the bylaws are the same.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Carrio to introduce the bylaws. All those in favor? Okay.
Bylaws 2011-136 to 2011-142, read a first time?
Second and third.
Okay, second and third, moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, and again, seconded by Counselor Carrio. All those in favor?
Bylaws 2011-136 to 2011-142, read a second and third time and passed.
Okay. New business. Do we have any, Counselor Morocco?
Yes, Your Worship. I just want to mention one thing. I'm not sure if people around here at the table are aware of this, but there's a fundraiser on November 14th for a gentleman called John Schultz. He's the gentleman that the bridge fell off his legs, and it happens to be-
Eighteenth?
On the eighteenth, sorry. The eighteenth is Friday, this Friday?
This Friday.
This Friday coming up. At the Niagara Falls Brigade on Dunn Street, the gentleman happens to be our past counselor, Wayne-
Campbell.
Campbell, thank you. Brother-in-law and the brother of Helga, so we hope that we can get people to go out there and support that. It's very tragic, and apparently he just had his other leg amputated. It's very tragic, and apparently he just had his other leg amputated this week, so he's now lost both his legs.
Yeah, real unfortunate. He was driving and a stove fell off his trailer on the highway, and he didn't want anyone else to hit it, so he got out to move it, and then he got pinched between the cars, and subsequently he had both his legs amputated, and he still has more challenges. So definitely, if we can all be there on Friday and drop in and support the cause, that'd be nice. Thanks for that reminder, Counselor. Is there any other new business? Counselor Thompson?
Just once, one more thing that I got a call from Mr. Chuck Evans again today. As you are aware, we have repeatedly asked the region to do something about the intersection at Churches Lane and Stanley Avenue. The latest report that came back finally, after request after request from the region indicated that the intersection was okay, and it didn't seem to be a problem. Received an email from Mr. Evans today indicating that they were just out there cleaning up after another serious accident at the intersection, so I'll pass that on to the-
Don't fight over it, guys.
Nobody wants to show that this continues to be a problem, and to refer to the region again. And so I have told Mr. Evans that I would again bring it up at the council, another accident today, so we'll keep you informed for the next one.
Okay, I'm going to ask your, Mr. Trent, did you want to comment on that?
Thank you. I also received a copy of that email as well. Unfortunately, it didn't say that it went to all of council, so I responded back to the individual and indicated that this was forwarded on to Mr. Cousins at the region for his review and consideration again. But I responded that today.
Okay, thank you very much. And speaking of Mr. Cousins, I should just mention too, I know it's been brought up a number of times, and sometimes I got to remember to bring up to speed what I learned at the region. And I know it was in the paper last week, but Thoreau Stone Road, you know, they've been going through the land acquisition, and there's been a lot of challenges between this ownership between SciTech and whatnot, but according to Director of Transportation at the region, Joe Cousins, they're very confident that by the first or second quarter of this coming year, we should begin that project to extend Thoreau Stone Road right to the Gale Center. And the good news part of the project, there will be sidewalks and bike lanes, is that right, Mr. Holman? And it includes repaving Stanley, which, you know, Stanley Avenue's in horrible shape, and it includes repaving it from Whirlpool Road right to Valley Way. So, I mean, it's bad right now. I know they're telling me Gams, they're directed to stay off that part of the road because things start shaking off their truck when they go down that road, so they're, they completely, it's that bad. So, yes, Counselor Peter Angelo?
Your Worship, I was going to talk about the road because we were at the Remember and Stay Ceremony, but I think the review did a very good job of putting a good article in the paper. I guess the one question I had though is, I know that the region has Phase 1 and Phase 2. Phase 1 is going to take the road from Thoreau Stone, Stanley, it's going to tee it, and it's going to bring it into the Gale Center. And then Phase 2 is going to take the road even further, all the way down to Victoria Avenue. My question is, if it's taken this long to sort of get the process going, and I guess apply for and hopefully get back a record aside condition, can we find out whether or not a record aside condition is going to be required for Phase 2? Because if that's the case, then, you know, perhaps we should ask the region to apply now for that record aside condition so that they have it cleared when they're ready to go forward.
That's a great idea. Mr. Holman, is there any comment on that?
Mr. Mayor, my understanding is that they're looking at all the property acquisition and conditions as part of the first phase.
Could we find, could we confirm that?
But I will get that confirmed.
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you. Yeah, that's a great idea. Any other new business?
German.
Okay, a German?
New committee.
Well, yeah, we're going in camera.
Do we need to go in favor?
Yep. We need a motion, so a motion going camera. Counselor Carrio, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. All those in favor? Okay, so we're going-